We also ask that you protect those serving overseas. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I take this golden opportunity to introduce myself once again. My name is John Grasso on behalf of myself and staff, and of course, the entire council. But most of all, on behalf of the people of Anaronda County, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Sincerely hope and trust that you find it very informative, and I'm sure you're going to find it a little bit enjoyable tonight, like always. And with that being said, Madam Secretary, you want to please read the ethics statement?
As soon as I have a working microphone. You got it? Okay. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office Complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Due to outside council here this evening, may I have a motion to suspend the rules to move the preliminary motion and to hear and to vote on Bill 77-17 out of order?
So, Madam Secretary.
And I got it. Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll, please?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to move the preliminary motion and to hear and vote on Bill 77-17 is passed.
Okay. May I have a motion that the partial readings of any bill resolution or amendments constitutes the reading of a whole?
So, Madam Secretary.
All right. So, let's see what we got here. Let's see. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 77-17.
Bill 77-17: An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, First Amendment to Agreement, Housing Commission of Anaronda County.
All right. Mr. Marsick and Friends, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Council, Bernie Marsick and the County Executive's Office. With me at the table is Cliff Martin, the CEO for the Housing Commission of Anaronda County, and Carrie Blackburn-Riley, who is the Counsel for the Housing Commission, as well as Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Bill 77-17 amends a payment in lieu of taxes agreement between the county and the Housing Commission of Anaronda County. This agreement addresses a change in ownership and control structure that still includes the Housing Commission as the general partner. As part of an approved conversion program, investors will be brought in to finance renovation and capital improvements of the communities, which will lessen the dependence on federal subsidies and grants, and also help us transition into a public-private partnership. The vast majority of the housing developments are dedicated to helping the disabled and elderly communities. There are 83 percent of our county's units are occupied by elderly and disabled people. We would be happy to answer any questions, and we'll be offering amendment at the appropriate time.
Okay. Anybody anything?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marsick, just so I understand, the change in the structure of the, into the RAD program is nothing that we have control of. We're simply being asked to amend the pilot because of that change. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Martin on this.
Yeah.
The decision to convert to the RAD program is one that's handled by the commissioners of the commission. So, the pilot issue is an ancillary issue because of the subtle change in the ownership structure.
Sure.
That will be coming as we complete the public-private partnership changes.
But the terms of the pilot are unchanged. It's right. I mean, the auditors blew their head off, said there was no fiscal impact, so.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
Who's purchasing the property?
So, the Housing Commission will be working with an investor, so the Housing Commission will maintain ground leases on the property, and then the purchase will actually be between the commission and the investor, where the commission will remain the general partner.
And the investor will be the landlord?
No, the Housing Commission remains the owner of the ground. The investor will be the limited partner, and the Housing Commission remains the general partner.
So, the investor's role, he comes in, she comes in, they invest in the property, new kitchens, stairs, whatever it is. The lease for the tenant is still with the Housing Commission?
That's correct.
And how's the investor get their money back?
Through the Housing Commission, through normal annual rents will pay their debt service, they pay the debt service off.
So, who's getting rent?
It comes to the partnership, who is the new ownership entity, and the partnership has to pay the debt service back to the investor.
And what's the interest rate to the investor?
All the loans are different on each of the different properties, but we're getting the best we can.
Sure.
But we haven't finalized any of them yet.
So, then the new partnership, what's the percentage ownership between the investor and the Housing Commission?
The investor's 99.09, and the Housing Commission is the remainder.
So, the limited partner owns 99.9 percent of the, and he's the limited guy?
Correct.
Oh, that makes sense. So, then, just to understand, so then that partnership pays the investor back, so there's monthly payments, debt service, and is there anything left over after that debt service per month?
If there's the pilot, maybe some, but without the pilot, that makes it very difficult to do the transactions. But the, it's not supposed to be, these aren't intended to be cash-heavy, heavy cash flow, so there'll be very little left over.
Right. So, everything goes to the investor?
Basically.
Okay. And it's a 20-year?
The terms of all the loans will be a little bit different. The construction loans will be 20-year. Some of the tax credits are 15.
And when we started this pilot, there was really no profit involved in this transaction, which is why, you know, which you could make a good argument as to why you wouldn't charge property taxes, because there's no profit involved. So, now, we're going to give up, you know, tax dollars so that an individual can profit.
The Housing Commission, remaining in the ownership structure, at the end of the term, intends to buy those back, and it's not-for-profit. So, any money that is made by the Housing Commission or by the ownership entities must go back to use for affordable housing in the county.
In 20 years?
Yes.
After we gave up the tax dollars so that one individual?
Correct. And any surplus that there is year-to-year remains with the Housing Commission.
But as we said, there's not going to be any.
There are very, not projected to be any.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peruka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick question, and I actually asked the auditor this earlier today, but I'm going to ask her just again for the record. I just wanted to make sure that this change doesn't result in an increase in taxes for anybody.
No. No, sir.
Okay. The Housing Commission is not paying any taxes now, and they're not going to pay any taxes after this?
Correct. The Housing Commission has either had a cooperation agreement or a pilot since 1968.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Martin, I just want to disclose the conversation we had this week. How many people are on a wait list for housing in Anaronda County?
For all the programs combined, it's a little over 15,000 families.
Okay. And then you also mentioned to me, and I think this is important for the public record, that I ask that the commission certainly come back with some policy. You know, this is one way that we can obviously address, to move that stock forward, but there's probably other things that we need to look at, especially consideration, the general development plan's under review, and there's a lot of policy and legislative questions. But I would hope that you would follow up that with the commission, and I just want to get that as a part of the record, that we certainly look forward to your recommendations, especially with that process occurring.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
One other question was the wait list, but how many units does this agreement affect?
When we're finished, and this will probably be in 2020 or beyond with the renovations and the conversions, 1,026 units countywide will go through the process.
So, 1,000, you said 1,000 what?
1,026.
1,026. All right. Thank you.
I just want to kind of, because I just want to get my hands around this a little bit more. So, you have 1,000 units, okay, plus or minus, and you've got an investor that's willing to go in there and rehab these places. Is that I'm hitting that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And this investor goes and throws, I don't know, $2 million into the place, okay? And so, the investor's going to turn around and is going to rent the place out, and the money's going to come back to the investor. And assuming the investor turned around and probably took, I don't know, the 6 percent, $12,000 bill for a mortgage, they're going to get enough revenue to pay their debt back. Am I right about that one, right?
Yes.
Then there's going to be a substantial profit, I would think. And I, and it's just, maybe I missed that, but it seemed like in the conversation that it sounded to me like nobody's making any money, or virtually nothing to talk about. And myself, as I consider myself at least somewhat of an investor, why would anybody do it if they're not making any money? Yeah, but it sounds, it sounds like we're not making, he's not making anything, is what it sounds like.
Well, most of the investors are coming, are getting interest and then tax credits.
The interest is, so the interest is, are they loaning the money to the housing authority?
Correct.
And how much are they charging the interest rate to loan it to the housing?
Well, we haven't finished those processes yet, but I would assume we're going to get the best rate we can shop for. But we're, we haven't settled on any of the properties yet. We're in the shopping now.
All right. So, the investor's going to loan the Housing Commission $2 million. Just throw it out there. And they're going to put an interest rate on that?
Correct.
Okay. And then the same investor is the one that's going to go in there and rehab the houses and also collect all the money, or actually, you guys are collecting money and give it to him or her?
Well, as, the Housing Commission being the general partner, we're going to be the entity doing all of it. We're going to be supervising all of the work, hiring the general contractor. We're still basically the landlord, and we still own the ground leases. As the general partner, we're the manager, we're controlling the process. The investor's coming in, the investor wants to get their money back, plus the interest, and then, of course, they'll get some fees upfront that all investors get. And those that are coming in, and on the tax credit side, will be getting the tax credits for 15 years.
Okay. So, your investors are basically your bank, is what's going on?
That's right.
Okay. So, it could be anybody. It could be City Bank or whoever, because it's, it gave me the feeling like it was somebody out there as an individual that wanted to make some money and is working this kind of deal. That's what it, it could be anybody.
That's correct. No, it's, they're banks, and the RAD concept is one nationally that's been pretty well put out there, and there are a number of banks nationally that have stepped up to participate in this program. And so, those are the types of banks that we're shopping, because they already are aware of the program, they understand what the housing agencies are trying to do, and they're stepping forward, and those are the ones that we're shopping, because they really are willing to participate in this program.
Okay. And so, go ahead, Mr. Fink.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you said that on the banks. I didn't realize that either. So, why would we not just do it like a normal, a normal banking program? I mean, why wouldn't we just take a loan out and put it on a debt service of the county? It's just so, I mean, anything else the county borrows money for, it's part of our bonds, right? I mean, just a different strategy, or we can't do it because of the Housing Commission guidelines?
It's a federal, it's a federal strategy under federal guidelines, so we really have to follow those procedures. And they're very restrictive, and they're very, you know, HUD oversees the whole thing, and it's a very restrictive process. And it's labor-intensive.
And it's a bank. So, it's a bank, so we're getting competitive interest rates. It's not hard money where somebody comes in and does 12 percent.
That's correct.
And then, we'll control the rent because we're the big partner.
That's right. And the rents, the process is overseen by the federal government. Also, the state has some involvement, as does the commission.
Thank you.
Okay. Makes more sense this time around.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Okay. With that being said, we're going to open up the public hearing on 77-17. If anybody wants to chime in, I don't believe I see in a sign-up sheet. Nope, no such luck. So, anybody wants to come in? Mr. Delameter, how are you today?
Pretty good.
Need your name and address in two minutes, please.
Joseph Delameter, Glamberney, Maryland. My first question is, if this has been going on since 1969, how much have we not got taxes on this? That's my first thing. So, it sounds like we're going around the system to borrow money, that these banks are getting tax money, so the taxpayers of Anaronda County are actually going to be paying twice because we're not collecting taxes from these properties, and then we're actually giving banks interest. It's not, it's, the interest is coming from the citizens of Anaronda County, the way I'm hearing this. And I'd like to, I'll paraphrase, because I don't want to take up too much time, but if we read Article 15 of our Declaration of Rights in our Maryland Constitution, it says taxes are supposed to be levied fairly over all districts. Well, if this building would be built next to me, and I pay taxes and they don't, does that sound fairly? Does it sound like we're following the Constitution of Maryland? I just want to ask these questions. Thank you.
Good argument. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on 77-17. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 77-17.
Bill 77-17: An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, First Amendment to Agreement, Housing Commission of Anaronda County.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peruka.
If I could, I just want to ask the administration if they want to respond to the questions that Mr. Delameter asked.
Shall I move to adopt the amendment first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the discussion first.
We haven't got it.
Yeah, hold on. Go ahead, Ms. Peruka.
Would you like to address his question at all?
I might defer to her.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I guess the first point is this has not been going on since 1969, because since 1969, the properties were owned by the Housing Commission of Anaronda directly under a clouded title by HUD. So, this will be the first time the properties have been taken out of the Housing Commission's direct ownership and put into a third-party entity. So, that's why this is a new amendment, and that's why it's necessary. With regard to the interest, the interest is actually going to be paid by the rents, which cover the property. So, the debt service is not going to be paid by the people of Anaronda County, but by the rents paid by the residents and through their federal subsidy. So, I believe that answers that question. But if you have a more specific question, I'd be happy to address it.
Well, if I could offer to, maybe some background that would help on this, these communities were never designated to make a lot of money. The rents on these communities are extremely low. The average rent in our elderly-disabled communities is about $210 a month, and then you get a minor subsidy. And it's for those reasons that things like the pilot are helpful, because these properties and their history would never have been able to pay a substantial real estate tax, because they're capped by how much rent they can collect, and they're capped by the amount of subsidy. And over the last 15 or 20 years, the public housing subsidy's been cut dramatically. So, pilots came into play, because the amount of income generated by these properties was extremely minimal, and they weren't able to pay the type of property taxes. So, that's a big part of the, I think, the philosophical reason why federally housing programs may have gotten pilots, because they're just not like a regular apartment community that generates that kind of income. It's very, very minimal.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. What that does, for me though, is begs another question, which I'm not going to ask, but it's a bigger question of why, why you could have taxes on a property that the property itself, the income of the property, can't, you know, can't support. But I'm not asking that question. That's for another day. It's another issue, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the question. How much property tax would it normally be that we're giving away over here? Because, you know, like Mr. Delameter said, he's got a very good point. You know, what's good for one is good for everybody. And so, how much tax are we actually talking here?
I really, because we've had a pilot, I can't answer that question. I don't believe I've really seen a reasonable tax bill, because the pilot's been in place. So, I couldn't.
So, you don't have like an assessed value on this property, 1,000 units? I mean, what's?
I might, but I, we have an assessed value, but I wouldn't know it off the top of my head right now.
Huh. I'd like, I tell you what I'd like to do. If you could dig that up and let me see what the assessed value is, and what is actually the tax that we would apply, that we are actually going to tell people that we're not going to charge, because, and I guess that Mr. Delameter makes a good point there, you know, what's good for one is good for all. I'm trying to help people too, but also, and then somebody else comes with their problems and say, well, why can't I do this? And you create a storm of this. And I'm all about helping people with the disabled and all that stuff, but I just need to be able to, when people come and attack me and say, why did you do this? I need some fighting words to be able to come back with it, and I just ain't got any right now to say, especially to Mr. Delameter coming over here and saying, why'd you vote for something like that? What am I going to say?
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Mr. Fink.
If I understand this correctly, if we were to vote this bill down, it's not like this property starts paying taxes. They just don't get the upgrades and the investment, correct? I mean, we are not, we are not deciding right now whether this property pays taxes or doesn't pay taxes. That's already been decided. Am I right there?
That's correct.
So, we're just saying whether we're going to allow a bank to come in and invest in this?
Actually, the pilot currently exists, the deals themselves, without the pilot, become very shaky, and we will do everything in our power to try to make them occur, but it becomes very problematic. But the decision of the council wouldn't derail this program. It's federally approved and federally moving.
And the vote on this bill, again, is not about whether this property pays taxes or not. That's already been decided when the pilot was put in place. This is just amending the deal.
Amending the existing pilot.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, now I'm at ease now. So, we're basically deciding whether we're going to allow this to go into a change in what he said. We're not making a decision here whether we're going to do a pilot or not, right?
You would be amending the existing pilot?
Mr. Chairman, you approved this pilot last term. You already voted yes.
Well, now I got, now I got another taste of it.
Just joking. I don't know if you did or not.
Thanks to Mr. Delameter over there. I got a new taste of things.
I just made that up for the record. I've got a new.
Like I just told these folks over here, for this last six, seven years, it's been a crash course doing this council and stuff. So, yeah, I'm waking up, that's for sure. Okay. With that being said, all right, let's see. Any discussion? Okay, we have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Have we had a motion to adopt yet?
No, you need to read the amendment first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I lost track. Amendment Number One, this amendment corrects a citation to state law in the body of the bill and in the accompanying exhibit, and substitutes an amended exhibit to reflect the correction.
Move to it, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All right, come through. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is just to clarify what section of state code this is referring to in the exhibit.
Okay. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay. Bill 77-17 is amended will be heard on November 6, 2017. Okay, we're now going to invite members of the audience who have signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. You're going to come up, and let's see, I've got five people, so I'm going to call off, and if I say your name wrong, like I say at every other meeting, it's not done with intent, I'll do my best. All right. So, let's start off with, it looks like we have Ms. Sarah Lacy, Ms. Lauren Kellum, Ms. Laura Schreik, looks like Michaela King, and Rebecca Forte. Come on down, please.
Sit in there.
Okay, we'll start off with Ms. Lacy. I need your name and address in two minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Lacy. My address is 2110 Owls Nest Way in Jessup.
Thanks for coming out.
And I brought my first grader, Emma, who is raising her hand, because she wants to ask you for a bus to come to our neighborhood, which is the Arundel Woods neighborhood in Jessup. We have been trying to work with the school board, the transportation office. I know people have been in touch with the county executive. We've had Delegate Mark Chang helping us. I believe Councilman Smith has been trying to get this for us as well. And I think the problem may be that somewhere there was some sort of oversight in the planning and zoning approvals process, because basically, Arundel Woods is an island within the county that's not connected to any public roads, and until it's connected to a public road, we can't get a bus stop, which really makes no sense, because the school board is already running a bus for a child with special needs that comes actually onto my street, in my neighborhood, over a road that is not yet public but will be. And that road's not in very good shape, so the school board has told us, well, it's not in very good shape, we don't want to run a bus over it. But they are doing that four times a day. That bus comes on my street, and my Emma says, why do they have a bus and I don't? Why do I have to go, you know, down a street that is in rough condition, not in good shape, and you want me to walk on it instead of sending the school bus up it into my neighborhood? The issue has been confused by the neighborhood having a second egress road that's actually a private road, that apparently, somewhere in the planning and zoning process, the county did not, would not accept that road as a public road. So, that's private, which means the school system has been waiting on the developer to apply for a permit for a road that's private, so he's never going to apply for that permit, and we have no control over the development of the other road that will be public, because it's being controlled by a developer who's developing the neighborhood next to us, so.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith.
I know she's done, but just to provide some additional context, we've certainly been involved with this issue, and apparently, the development isn't fully completed, and the school system has a policy where they're prohibited from sending a bus into a community that is not yet complete. So, what we're trying to do is get with the developer to see if they could, on this specific road, if they could expedite it. And the reason, the child who has a disability, there's a federal-state provision that says you have to go to their house to get them, no matter what the conditions. So, that bus has to go to that house to pick up that kid who has the disability, whereas the other kids are not under that same sort of statute. And so, that's the sort of conundrum we've been facing, but we are going to try to work with the developer to speed up the public road that's going to be for that community, unless the school system changes their policy with allowing buses to go into unfinished But we are going to try to work with the developer to speed up the public road that's going to be for that community, unless the school system changes their policy with allowing buses to go into unfinished or unfinished developments. Because right now, they just stop on the outskirts of the development instead of going into it. And the superintendent has said, when it's done, that they would certainly send a bus all the way through it, but they're prohibited from doing it until it's completed. But we're going to see if we can expedite that public road on the developer's side. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Chairman, I had a similar situation when I served on the Board of Education. How far is your house away from the school?
Up from the school, 1.2 miles.
Okay, so I think you're within the range. The other thing is, is there a bus stop that not in your development but near, where you could drop your daughter off? I know that there was something, because as Mr. Smith said, there is board policy about the community being developed, but I'm talking about, is there any compromise that the transportation office has offered to you?
Yes. There is a stop that we use that is six tenths of a mile away, but it requires walking down the road that is under construction, which is not safe for unaccompanied children. And no parent in the neighborhood is satisfied with that bus stop, but the transportation office has refused to do anything about it. And I think the issue's a little more complicated, if I may, just because the school board doesn't actually have a policy that expressly says, we won't go into a neighborhood that's under construction. And if they did, they'd be violating that policy to accommodate the one child, which I think is great. I'm not in any way suggesting take that away. But there is a problem, because if that, either the development of the public road needs to be speeded up before the winter, or you won't be picking up that child either, because the county won't plow that road, even though it's going to be public. So that's why I say we're an island. When I'm here as the president of the homeowners association and also as a mom of, we need someone to, you know, stick like a dog on this issue and actually find what the root problem is and fix it soon.
As a follow-up, I know Mr. Hager's here. That may be something, too, that we have to work before we even allow the development to go forward. I'm just going to be honest with you. If the board doesn't want to do the policy, we need to think about that for the future. You know, when these cases come up, you know, let's look at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had a situation like this a couple of years back, and a development was going up, and I was getting calls from people, they were driving by the development where construction was going on, and they said when they hit that bump, it would throw their cup of coffee into the roof of their car. And I said, wow, that's like an overstretch. You know what I did? I don't drink coffee. But I went to the glass of water around there, and I drove over that bump, and it liked to throw it into the roof of the truck. So what I asked the administration to do is to hold all the occupancy permits until the developer went out there and took care of the problem. And did that, end the story.
Well, if I may, we have a bump like that, but it's the part that joins the private road. And since the county didn't accept it as a public road or require it to be made a public road, in the first instance, the developer isn't going to fix that bump just for the school bus.
Right.
Which is why the other school bus for the child with special needs comes in on the road that will be public but is not yet, which has potholes, still will spill your coffee.
Got you, got you. All right. With that being said, let's go down, it looks like Ms. Laurie Kellum. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
That's actually her.
I am Laura Kellum.
Nice to meet you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good. I live in Cape St. Clair. Immediately after same-sex marriage became law in Maryland on January 1, 2013, Councilman Peruca called upon all the clerks of the various courts of Maryland to violate Maryland law and refuse to grant marriage licenses to same-sex couples. With the firm conviction that his personal interpretation of scripture trumps a Maryland statewide referendum that approved same-sex marriage, Mr. Peruca stated that sodomite unions violate God's law. Sodomite activity is declared to be perverse and is clearly banned by law in Leviticus 18 verse 22. Mr. Peruca then stated, as a matter of fact, the very next verse in Leviticus bans the perversion of bestiality, implying that gays and lesbians are no better than people who have intimate relations with animals. Leviticus, the third book of the Old Testament, also states that women must wait 33 days to be purified after giving birth to a boy, 66 days if it's a girl. Then they must bring to the priest at the entrance to the tent of meeting a year-old lamb for a burnt offering and a young pigeon or a dove for a sin offering. Mr. Peruca, I'd like to ask you why you don't condemn new mothers for not sacrificing year-old lambs with the same vehemence you condemn homosexuals. Furthermore, Mr. Peruca, I wish you knew who you were hurting with your words. Many LGBTQ Americans remain closeted, too fearful of hate and rejection because of people like you. Your hateful words could be hurting a family member, a friend, a coworker, or a neighbor of yours. So I urge you to think before you attack the LGBTQ community again, as in addition to harming the LGBTQ community in general, you may be hurting someone you know and care about.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, going on our next person, let's see, Ms. Laura Schrank. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Thanks for coming out, ma'am. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Laura Schrank. I live on Swan Drive in Cape St. Clair. Recently, County Executive Steve Schu and Councilman Pete Smith launched Anarundel United, an anti-racism initiative for Anarundel County, and I commend you for doing that. In the spirit of this initiative, this council should pass a resolution asking for the resignation of Councilman Peruca. During the time of Mr. Peruca's membership in the League of the South, the organization unequivocally advocated for the independent theocratic Southern Nation governed by and for white Christians. Why would Mr. Peruca have joined this group and remained a member for so many years if he didn't agree with the League's clearly stated mission? Mr. Peruca has never answered that question. Instead, despite his long and close association with the League, Mr. Peruca claimed that it was a free market, or a Christian free-market group. He would like us to believe that the League of the South is the type of organization that ordinary decent citizens would join. It is not. It is a white supremacy organization that racists join to further their intentions of subjugating people simply because they are not white, straight, cisgendered, or Christian. In addition, Mr. Peruca has published statements on his website, The American View, that are hateful and discriminatory toward Muslims, immigrants, and the LGBTQ community. Mr. Peruca's presence on the county council sends the message that hate and white supremacy is tolerated in this county. If we are truly serious about our Anarundel United initiative to eradicate hate and racism in this county, we should insist that Mr. Peruca resign. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, next person, it looks like Michaela, is that correct? King, Ms. King?
Michaela.
Thanks for coming out, ma'am. Two minutes, name and address.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time. My name is Michaela King. I live in Severna Park, Maryland, zip code 21146, in the Chart Ridge community. I have lived in this area for almost 20 years while getting my degree in economics and business management from Gaucho College, not far from here, north of Baltimore, and taking classes at Loyola. You're alma mater, Mr. Peruca. I served as a co-president of the college Republicans. Since then, while I have kept my fiscal conservative roots, I lean more progressive, or maybe you could call it libertarian, on social issues. This one foot on each side of the aisle political perspective means I look at issues from many different angles, economic, social, freedom. Most importantly, I think you'll agree, Mr. Peruca, I look at political issues from a constitutional perspective. The use of your 10-question template to determine whether proposed legislation comports with the U.S. Constitution, Maryland Constitution, and county charter is admirable. However, the question of whether the legislation is, quote, "in accordance with biblical standards for law and government is in itself unconstitutional." My mother was a U.S. history teacher and civics teacher for over 20 years, and I was brought up with a deep appreciation of our country's history, our constitution, Bill of Rights, and the founding fathers' writings on their intentions in forming our democratic republic. Nowhere in any of these documents is direction creating government laws or legislative vetting for religious compliance. We leave that to authoritarian theocratic regimes like Saudi Arabia and Afghanistan. Instead, freedom of religion is codified in the very first amendment to our constitution, guaranteeing that, quote, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." Sir, this means all religions. We are all free to practice our own religion, any religion, Christianity or otherwise, and we are all free from laws rooted in the establishment of any religion.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, let's see, next person, let's see, it looks like Ms. Rebecca, is it Forte?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. You're live. Name and address, please, in two minutes.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Forte. I live at 752 Dividing Road, Severna Park, Maryland 21146. That puts me in District 5. I would like to take this time to thank my local county council, state government, and federal government for maintaining the secular government that I know and value. I, along with Thomas Jefferson, am relieved that no tyrannical king or ruler is forcing me to follow laws based on the Church of England. In fact, I would like to thank Thomas Jefferson, who valued freedom from an established religion so much that he introduced the Virginia Statute for Religious Freedom, which was the basis for the Establishment Clause in the Constitution. Although Virginia's version only guarantees these rights for men, thankfully, the Constitution guarantees it for all persons, and hence why I'm allowed to speak in front of you now. Knowing that I am free from state laws based on one central religion is a relief to me. Whether it's state mandated Shabbat business closures, like they have in Israel, there are no businesses open on Sundays, Saturday, sorry, or state mandated dress codes like they have in Iran, religion has no place in our secular government in the United States. Along with freedom of speech, which coincidentally is in the same amendment, this is the civilian right that I value most. And I'm not alone. Jefferson was so proud of this contribution to the Constitution that it is listed on his tombstone. I love the United States, and I am proud to be an American. I love the United States, and I have the honor of being a North American. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, all right, our next group of people, we're going to see, it looks like we have Ms. Allison Callahan? Callahane?
Colleen.
Okay. Sorry about that. No intent. Looks like Morgan Van Arsdale. Deborah McHale. And I have two more seats if anybody else wants to chime in on this run. Anybody else? Okay, got two more people. Very good. All right. So I guess we'll start off with Ms. Allison. Name and address. Thanks for coming out. Two minutes, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hold on, let me make sure you got your live here. There you go.
Are we good?
Go ahead, Ms. Allison.
Yep, thank you. My name is Allison Colenain. I'm from Severna Park in the Ben Oaks community. I recently read a story in the Capitol reporting that Michael Peruca says Planned Parenthood is committing genocide on African-Americans. Looking into it further, I found this statement in Mr. Peruca's August 25 post on his website, The American View. Quote, "What could be more racist than a national program designed to eliminate black people? What could be more racist than a black genocide?" He goes on to claim that Planned Parenthood is the agent of this genocide because it provides abortion services in minority neighborhoods. The idea that Planned Parenthood is committing genocide is patently and obviously false. Genocide is the deliberate and systematic extermination of a group. Extermination is not limited to the unborn, and there is no choice involved. It involves wholesale murder of families by force. How can this even compare to a situation where a woman walks into a clinic of her own free will to pay for a service? This is the sort of distortion of facts that contributes so much to our collective inability to solve problems. Further, it indicates a lack of judgment that is very concerning in an elected official, my elected official, I'm in District 5, who is in the position of passing laws that affect us all. I'm a licensed mechanical engineer. My license requires that I base my work on facts and accepted standards. It's important that our elected officials be held to similar standards. On his website, Mr. Peruca's organization, called Institute on the Constitution, actively disseminates a whole variety of inaccurate and distorted material. It's time for us to stand up to this nonsense. It harms our civic discourse and reduces our ability to solve the urgent problems we face. Mr. Peruca should step down.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, let's see, Ms. Morgan Van Arsdale. How do you say it?
Van Arsdale. You have it right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out, ma'am. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Van Arsdale, and I live in Cape St. Clair. I'm one of Mr. Peruca's constituents. I'm a taxpayer and a homeowner in his district. I'm also the parent of a kindergartner and a third grader. I want our public schools to achieve excellence for all kids. Unfortunately, Mr. Peruca doesn't share those thoughts. In his public comments, he has shown repeatedly that he is opposed to one of the most critical and costly functions of our county government. His website, The American View, says compulsory public education was designed to destabilize and, over time, destroy the moral fabric of America. Public schools were designed by America's enemies to destroy America. When running for his current seat, Mr. Peruca was asked an innocuous question about school start times. His response was, "Our children are taught that their great-great-granddaddy was a hunk of primordial ooze in a pond somewhere, and that their granddaddy was a slimy, eely thing that finally grew legs after a million years. And their daddy was a monkey, and then what are they? They're like the son of a monkey? And what's funny is then they try to teach the kids self-esteem. When they just taught the kid he was a massive mutations and mistakes. So what time they begin doing that in the morning is really not important." Most dramatically, on his blog when running for president, he wrote, "Our public schools are a cesspool of politically correct condom-dispensing, sodomy-promoting sewage that calls itself education. I don't share Mr. Peruca's view. I believe our public schools are home to communities of learners, supported by caring, dedicated professionals, who deserve to be respected by their local elected officials. I ask that Mr. Peruca step down. The residents of his district deserve to be represented by someone who supports, rather than mocks, the institutions that he oversees." Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out, ma'am. Okay, and let's see, Mr. Delamere. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Mrs. Delamere, Glenburn, Maryland.
Oh, did I miss somebody?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Ms. McHale? Sorry about that, ma'am. Go ahead. Two minutes, name and address. Thank you. Let me, you got, you got your mic. There you go.
Does that work?
You're locked.
Yeah, I'll take care of Mr. Joe later for trying to take my time.
Mr. Joe.
My name is Deborah McHale, and I live in Anarola County, Pasadena. I'm here to actually voice my support for Mr. Peruca on our county council, as well as the entire council. I believe that Mr. Peruca is a courageous statesman, trying to do a very difficult job of helping our county be as healthy as it can possibly be. Mr. Peruca recognizes that just because a governing body can legislate on an issue does not mean it ought to, or that it has true jurisdiction to do so. Just as many people want to visit the doctor and receive a prescribed miracle pill, this is unrealistic for the patient, and it's unfair on the doctor. Most diagnoses are messy and complicated, with multiple options and multiple steps required. And it is the same with important issues in our county. Many times, it is a messy and complicated set of options, and passing just yet another bill or law is not always the best solution. It takes real courage to stand up to the noise and say, no. This is not good for our county as a whole, and not appropriate to our council specifically. There is a lot of work to do, and to continue to do, in our county, and I would like to see our county embrace individual liberty with limited government only as deemed necessary. Thank you, Mr. Peruca, and the entire county council for the hard job you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll try it again. Mr. Delamere, name and address in two minutes, please.
Mrs. Delamere, Glenburn, Maryland. Second Chronicles 714, "If my people, who are called by my name, shall humble themselves, pray, seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, forgive their sin, and heal their land." I think our county needs to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delamere. Sir? I'm sorry, I don't remember your first name. Come on down. I'm sorry, I remember your first name. I know you spoke well last time, and like I said earlier, I got quite a few texts saying you said some really good things. Name and address, please, in two minutes.
Tori Snow, Odenton, Maryland. Just a quick reminder that our public school system sent 95% of our black students into high school without a basic competency in math. Mr. Chairman, I would like to request that inquiry be made into the appropriateness of the activities of Anarola County Public School Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Bob Mosher. Mr. Bob Mosher's complicity and involvement with a politically partisan event is of concern to me, as he took advantage of an opportunity to support the Anarola County Democratic Women in a training. The Anarola County Democratic Women announced that there would be a training, and that they explicitly excluded Republicans from that activity. When I, this exclusion was included publicly published by an officer of the Anarola County Democratic Women on the Arundel Patriot. When I publicly confronted the Anarola County Democratic Women about their exclusionary activity, they retaliated by banning me from their Facebook page. When I, they then came on my page, called me a liar. When I presented them evidence of their activity, they simply refused to acknowledge it. Now, I repeatedly pressed them to clarify the requirements to attend the event, and they simply refused. Now, it's discouraging to me, the duplicitous activities of our local Democrats and the Anarola County Democratic Women, that discourages me, but that's not my concern today. I'm very, very disappointed that our library, public library systems are actively being used to have a discriminatory training event that explicitly excludes county residents, but that's not my main concern tonight. I'm just dismayed at the extreme connections between our county school board and the local Democrats. But I do believe that the chairman has an obligation to counsel Mr. Mosher and other chief officers for the Anarola County Public School Systems to limit their involvement with such unethical organizations. The county has explicitly declared its commitment to the highest standards of ethics, and I would like the council to respond by publicly acknowledging the nature of this.
Okay. All right, let's see. Anybody else?
Right here.
Here we go. Oh, I'm sorry. It's going to be a hard one tonight.
Adrian Fair.
Name and address in two minutes, sir, please.
4709 Sarre Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland.
Thanks for coming out, sir.
This is the Maryland Constitution, law of the land. Article 36 begins that, "As it is the duty of every man to worship God in such manner as he thinks most acceptable to him," capital H, meaning God. Paragraph 2 says, "Nothing shall prohibit or require the making reference to belief in reliance upon or invoking the aid of God or a supreme being in any governmental or public document, proceeding, activity, ceremony, school, institution, or place." Let me read that again, because the operative word here is, is "nothing shall prohibit," meaning that Michael Peruca has every right to rely on his Bible and his God as he sees fit to make decisions pertaining to government. This is the law. Now, you got a lot of people coming up here talking about unconstitutional. Nothing is unconstitutional just because somebody comes up here and says it is. You have to reference the actual Constitution of the state of Maryland that says, "Any believe in God." This was written in 1867 by the founders of the government of this state. So I just wanted to come up here with some real facts. Finally, you know, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not basing on race, but I spent my whole life in the black community. There is a significant portion of it. I don't speak for the whole black community that are outright in the belief that Planned Parenthood was created to erase the black community from the face of the earth.
Yes, it is. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, how are you doing? We talked back there. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Michelle Speakman, Glenburn, Maryland.
Thanks for coming out.
Okay, I just wanted to make a brief statement. I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me if I appear nervous.
Don't worry about it. Just look at it as like I'm your next-door neighbor, and you're either happy with me or mad at me. So go ahead, let me have it.
After seeing the latest county council meeting, I felt it was important to attend this meeting, to speak. My family is on a brief hold because I feel too strongly. Councilman Peruka, I come here tonight to show my support for you. Working alongside you, going on two years now at Anarola County's Republican Central Committee, I have never once detected any racism, misogyny, or bigotry from you. I have never heard a statement from you that could be construed to be racist, misogynist, or bigoted. In fact, you've been very kind to me and others. I don't think you'll ever satisfy your critics, and I think it's great that you will not concede to the bullying you receive. These are my thoughts, these are my observations, and these are my opinions, and they are not up for debate or discussion. I look forward to continuing to work with you. That is all I wanted to say. I do need to get back home to take care of my family. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, sir, how are you doing today? Thanks for coming out. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Fantastic. Nathan Hall, 20 Southgate Avenue, Annapolis District.
Nice to see you again, Nathan.
Good to see you, too. Just want to speak in behalf of my colleague on the Central Committee, Michael Peruka. I've known Michael over the last year and a half to be a man of high integrity, one who is very professional and also humble at the same time. And really, what I'd like to say tonight is that it would probably be prudent for us just to return to an environment of proper decorum and professionalism here, in lieu of a lot of these, you know, earlier statements made against him, which are clearly not accurate. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Anybody else? Okay, moving forward. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of October 2, 2017.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman John Grasso at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Grasso, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 2, 2017?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of October 2, 2017. Stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8717, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer of Funds and Supplementary Appropriations. Bill Number 8817, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Shoreham Beach Special Community Benefit District. Bill Number 8917, An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, PPE Casino Resorts Maryland LLC, Part of 7,000, Arundel Mill Circle, Hanover, Maryland.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 4517, Resolution Confirming the Reappointment of an Anarola County Resident to Serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
All right. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolutions 45-17 out of order?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hear and vote Resolution Number 4517 is passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4517.
Resolution Number 4517, Resolution Confirming the Reappointment of an Anarola County Resident to Serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
All right. Mr. Marsick, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick and the County Executive's Office. Resolution 4517 reappoints David James to the Spending Affordability Committee. He will serve a four-year term, ending December 31, 2021. You should have his resume before you. And again, this is a reappointment of Mr. James.
Okay. Anybody have questions? Seeing none. We're gonna open up the public hearing on 4517. If anybody wants to chime in, please feel free to come down. Two minutes, name and address. Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're gonna close the public hearing on Resolution Number 4517. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4517.
Resolution Number 4517, Resolution Confirming the Reappointment of an Anarola County Resident to Serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
All right, any discussion? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4517.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 4517 is adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7617.
Bill Number 7617 is amended. An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewage Systems.
Okay. Mr. Marsick, you got your little crowd coming over here. Marsick and friends?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick and the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, Lynn Miller and Cindy Carrier from Planning and Zoning, and Chris Murphy from Public Works, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, and Al Herb from Health. Bill 7617 is the update to the county's water and sewer master plans required by state law. We amended this bill at the last hearing, and we'll be offering amendments at the appropriate time again tonight.
Okay. Anybody? All right, so I guess we're gonna open up the public hearing on 7617. Anybody want to chime in? Seeing movement in the crowd. We're gonna close the public hearing on 7617. As amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7617.
Bill Number 7617, An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewage Systems.
Any discussion? Seeing no movement. Okay, we got a few amendments here. So let's see. Madam Secretary, you're gonna read Amendment Number 2?
Amendment Number 2. This amendment changes the sewer service category for property located on Whitehall Road from future service to planned service, and changes the water service category for the same property from no public service to planned service.
All right, get a motion to adopt. No move. All right, I got the second in there. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Gray's explanation really explains what I was gonna say about the amendment. But this is a property that is being changed from future to planned service for sewer, and from no public service to planned service for water. Appreciate your support.
Whitehall Road, where is that at? Whose area is that?
That's Mr. Peruka's area. Right along Route 50 there. This property is right over near where the McDonald's and Wendy's are.
Got it.
Route 50.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Marsick, is this being added because there was a new application that was received?
It was a late application, yes. It was received after the original applications were received.
Was that in the stuff that you gave us? Okay.
In the amendments we offered last time were received after the application was well. So the original bill has all the applications were received.
Correct. Seven of the nine, or whatever, right?
Correct. And then we had, this is, I believe there's three, excuse me, that were received after the application deadline.
Okay, can we get copies of those as well? I mean, I know we're voting on it now, but just going forward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Of the applications, you're saying, correct.
I'm sorry?
Of the applications.
Yeah, copies of the applications that are for these ones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Was the application received prior to the bill being introduced?
Not for this one, no, is after the bill was introduced.
Okay. And Ms. Miller, this went through the same vetting process that the other ones did, and your office concluded to introduce it. So could you just give us a brief justification, if you would?
Sure. The property is a larger parcel than what, than the area that's the subject of this amendment, as you can see on the map exhibit. And it's a split-zone parcel, and the commercially-zoned portion is at the top, adjacent to Whitehall Road, which is what the applicant is seeking to have added to the utility service area. And I believe they're in the process of subdividing, and the bulk of the parcel would remain outside of the service area.
And it's currently undeveloped?
Yes, the majority of it is. I think there's, I think there is a structure in the commercial portion of the property.
Okay, so they wouldn't be able to do a commercial use unless it had sewer, and so we're putting in the sewer on this part of the property?
Ideally, if it's gonna be a commercial use, it should be on public utilities.
Okay. Sounds reasonable to me. Thank you.
All right. Okay, with that being said, we're gonna call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 is adopted.
All right. All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 3.
Amendment Number 3. This amendment changes a map label to correctly identify the Ferndale Water Storage Facility as a standpipe storage tank and not an elevated storage tank.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
All right. Administration?
Not much sure to add on this one, Mr. Chairman.
Come again?
Nothing to add on this one.
Okay, so you got a water storage tank as a standpipe storage tank and not an elevate tank. What exactly is the, I mean, I'm guessing an elevated tank is one of the ones you see up in the tree, I mean, up the tree, up in the, you know, up in the air. And a standpipe storage tank is?
It's just a, it's a vertical tank full of water. The lower half doesn't necessarily get used as much as it's not like an elevated tank. All the water's in the top. So it's like a vertical column of water.
Straight up. Where the other one's like a big ball and goes?
On the top, yeah.
Okay, got it. All right, sounds like a plan to me. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 is adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 4.
Amendment Number 4. This amendment changes the boundary of the King's Heights-Odenton 330 Water Pressure Zone to include an area located at Sappington Station Road and Maryland Route 32, and changes the water service category for the same property from no public service to planned service.
Motion to adopt. No move. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Administration?
This was another application that was received, and I'll let Planning and Zoning go into the details of the approval. The council's looking for more details.
Okay, go ahead.
This, we did support this application. This amendment is actually correcting the way that we drew the map. The application we received was for the entire interior area within the, within the highway loop here, which is all commercially-zoned. Some of it is state right-of-way property, but our understanding is, one of the private property owners of property there is in the process of acquiring some of the state right-of-way to include in their development plans. And so would actually like for all of the commercially-zoned property to be included.
Okay, this is Mr. Pruski's area, but I know it's your area, Mr. Pruski, but I'm still gonna ask the questions anyway, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
I always feel like there's something coming through the pipe, or the pipe. Okay, so this amendment, is this opening up some kind of development that you'd like to share with us, on a big development of some sort that may be coming down the pipe? Because I heard the word "commercial," and I'm okay with opening up commercial places because people need jobs. What I'm not okay with is inviting more people in Anarola County. We got enough people in Anarola County, so I'm not a pro, a person in favor of putting larger developments in Anarola County. So where are we at with this?
We don't have, to my knowledge, a specific development application in for this property yet, but it is sound C1, which is a local-scale commercial zoning district.
Okay. So in other words, any of this property that's affected, is it zoned residential? Like, there's a large parcel, like 30 or 50 acres or something like that, that is tagged to this, that we're not talking about tonight?
No. Again, the property's sound C1, local commercial, and the applicant who applied for this is a church. And I'm gonna ask one of our fellow staff.
I like churches. I was in one Sunday. That's good.
Before you have it.
Anything I'm missing?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to say something, Mr. Pruski, but you know how they try to put the shuffle to it.
I know, I know.
You know how it is.
So I'm very familiar with this property, because this is where you enter where the landfill is. And Route 32 actually cuts over it. So if anybody wanted to do C4 residential, I don't think it's the most appropriate place anyways. But the church application, what do we know about what state easements? That's the question that I have. Do we know where they're asking for it? Because 32 exits off of Sappington Station Road around, you know, with the access point. I was just curious on what state easements they're asking for in terms of use for, to get water access, or what?
Again, I don't know that they're asking for state easements. I think the state may be surpassing part of the right-of-way property, and the private owner would be interested in acquiring if that's the case.
Gotcha.
I also do think the development is gonna be limited because access off of the interchange here is limited.
Very limited. Okay, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, let me tell you a little story. I remember, without pointing out names and everything, there was these individuals that would buy a church on residential land and would wait for a year or two till comprehensive zoning came along, and they would solicit a councilperson to have a change to C3 or C4, so they could make a boatload of money. All right? By any chance, do you know who the principals are of this church?
I do not.
Okay. Well, do me a favor. We got the amendment, so it's not gonna call for vote tonight, but if you could, I'd like to find out who the principals are to make sure this is not the same thing that's happening again, because these people tried to try the same plan with me, to get to switch over and do a comprehensive zoning, to go from an R1 to a C3, C4. And then I found out this is the normal game plan that they play. So I just wanna make sure it's not the same people that tried to get me to do something like that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Miller, while we've been talking, I pulled up the map.
I did the same thing.
So what's strange about this amendment is that there's no detail on this side of the map, and I don't know if that's on purpose or an oversight. But it looks to me, when I compare it for Google Maps, not to use a proprietary product, but that's what's on my phone, that it's essentially the entire area within that quasi-clover leaf that comes over after 32, right? So that's all one parcel, and it's completely bounded by 32 and Sappington Station Road. And that's what we're talking about, right?
It is completely bounded by.
I mean, that's why it's a funny shape, because I was wondering why it's such a round shape. But that's the contour of the exit from Sappington Station Road on, it's an exit ramp onto 32.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So currently, if I'm reading this map right, there's this little protrusion that is already planned service, that seems to have three small dwellings on it. We're talking about including the rest of that boundary that's inside that clover leaf. And do you know what the zoning of that is?
C1.
It's all C1. All right. So you can't, you can't put a bunch of residential on there.
Let me tell you something, my friend. What you got, now maybe with Mr. Pruski's, it's his area, but the game plan is, is to set this up as residential-type so-called or a commercial, and then flip, they can flip one way or the other, whichever way they can get some money. They took a piece of property, and might say where it's at, because the people are gonna know where it's at.
They'd have to change the zoning, though.
Huh?
They'd have to change the zoning.
Yeah, well, that's exactly right. So they set the game plan up, and then when the comprehensive zoning comes along, and I'm sure Mr. Pruski's not that type of person, but someone who was a little on the weak side might turn around and do that.
Hmm.
Believe me, anything can happen.
Luckily, Mr. Pruski votes before me, so I can see what he's gonna do.
That's it. Just looking out for you, Mr. Pruski. That's all.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, so let me follow up. It's the county's intention to support this based upon C1. Am I correct? Let's get that on the record and be clear.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need.
All good. All right, Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on Amendment Number 4?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5.
Amendment Number 5. This amendment makes corrections to the background information and water supply system chapters of the Master Plan for Water and Supply, Water Supply and Sewage Systems 2017.
Move to adopt. Get a second? All right, I hear it. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this amendment and the next amendment are amendments to the actual plan itself. Some of these are corrections that have been provided to us from the Department of Environment, and others are corrections that have been noticed in final review of the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Marsick, am I correct to assume, then, that there's no substantive change in policy from these amendments? These are just making sure we're being accurate?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anybody else? Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on Amendment Number 5, please?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 5 is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6.
This is a technical amendment to make corrections to typographical errors in the Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewage Systems 2017.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair. All right, I got it. Administration?
Same thing, Mr. Chairman. These are just technical amendments to make corrections in the bill, or, excuse me, in the plan.
Okay. Anybody? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number six is adopted.
Okay. Bill number 7617, this amendment will be heard on November 26, 2017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 7817.
Bill number 7817, an ordinance concerning pensions, general provisions, deferred retirement option programs, fire service retirement plan, police service retirement plan, and detention officers and deputy sheriff's retirement plan.
Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table, Ann Bicowski and Andy Rhodes from Personnel, as well as Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law. Bill 7817 allows the county to rehire retirees for certain positions without a reduction in retirees' pension benefits. You'll remember, we had this bill in and withdrew this bill earlier due to some corrections that had to be made. This bill modifies the reemployment provisions for retirees who participated in a deferred retirement option program, the DROP program, which include participants in the police service retirement plan, detention officers and deputy sheriff's retirement plan, and certain participants in the fire service retirement plan. These provisions are consistent with the terms negotiated in the fiscal year 2018 collective bargaining. We will be offering amendments at the appropriate time. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Yeah. Mr. Marzick, and like I said, maybe I was asleep on this part, but I thought we already had the DROP plan all in play and all that. So what is it that we're doing different here?
We do. This is to remove the penalty provisions for people who leave, retire from the county so that they can, the county can go out and rehire these people without them losing part of their benefits that they've...
So there was actually a penalty thing in that, huh?
Correct.
I never knew that.
Correct.
Okay. That's fair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, this is directed for Ms. Rhodes. Do we collaborate with the bargaining units on this? I mean, obviously, we're saying that it's, you know, within line of what we have for collective bargaining, but in terms of reaching out to the actual agencies that represent employees, I'd like you to speak on that, please.
Yes, sir. We did negotiate this at the table, as well as within probably the last month. I brought all of the union presidents back and invited all of them to come back to the table to go over the changes that were going to be made in the bill to make sure they understood that. All of the department heads are very much aware of the changes as a result of this legislation.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing on bill number 7817. And let's see, we have a couple people. And here's an old favorite, O'Brien Atkinson. How about that? I didn't see him, but I guess, oh, there he is. There wouldn't be a Monday night, wouldn't be complete without the officer. And let's see, next person we have, our detention man, right? Dale Wardriff?
Wardriff.
There you go. Thanks for you guys coming out tonight. Always glad to see your happy faces. Okay. Obie, go ahead. Two minutes, you get the buzzer. Address.
Good evening, O'Brien Atkinson. I live on Double Day Drive in Arnold, and I'm here representing tonight the Fraternal Order of Police, and I'm here in favor of this legislation. We would usually oppose something like lifting penalties to rehire current retirees to fill positions traditionally held by our active police officers. However, this is the right thing to do. We have been and remain in a very serious staffing crisis in the police department. Now, the county has declared an all-out assault on gangs. We're still battling the heroin and opioid epidemic, and we need boots on the ground. Our department has been very creative with our staffing, but our police officers are hurting. If this bill relieves even some of the strain on our staffing levels, we will support it. Thank you.
Obie, just out of curiosity, what is the police count up to right now?
We're at 695.
And what was it going up to?
It was supposed to go to 800, and that was the promise of the administration. However, prior to the administration taking office three-plus years ago, we had actually more police officers. We had 696.
So is there any more getting added to that 695, or no?
They're bringing in officers. We've done a lot as a police department. We've modified the lie detector test. We've modified some of the standards. We've done everything we can to try to get people, qualified candidates here. However, we've been having a lot of difficulty. I don't think that the number of people that we're bringing in is enough to cover the amount of people we're losing from new hires, or the amount of people that we're losing who are senior officers, experienced officers who are just opting to retire and go elsewhere.
Yeah, because I remember the council, I remember, didn't we, the council approve so many hirees from new police, what it was, it, do you remember? Was it 15 or something like that? Last budget? Didn't we step it up?
Last couple of years.
Yeah, last couple of years we've added police. Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
Mr. Atkinson, you talk about the shortage in the police department. Is it just because we're not filling the pins that we have now, or is it, we just, we don't have the room to hire enough because we only have whatever the max is right now? I don't know if that was clear there, but is the issue more in that we just haven't been able to hire for the vacancies, or there isn't, there still wouldn't be enough if we were completely maxed out to what we're allowed to have? Or a combination of both?
Right. We're not filling the positions that we currently have. We need more positions. It's kind of difficult to say when we can't fill the ones that we have. However, we're hoping that at some point, our starting salary will no longer be the lowest in surrounding jurisdictions, and we can start to bring people here and get people into the academy. It's a very long process to become a police officer, between the background check, the academy, training on the streets. It is a very long and arduous process that isn't for everybody. So we lose a lot of people in the academy. We're losing a lot of people coming out on the streets that just can't seem to do the job.
Do you know the dropout rate in the academy, off the top of your head, close to it?
The dropout rate in the academy?
Yeah, once they get in, how many drop out?
Our attrition rates are off the hook. It's, I can get you specific numbers.
Ballpark. Is it 50%? 20%?
Throughout the, I would say, I would say probably in the academy, it's probably like 20 to 30%.
Wow. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we're trying to move in the right direction, right?
I hope so.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Go ahead. Dale, fire away. Name and address, two minutes, please.
Dale Wardriff, 876 Claffey Avenue, Garnaville, Maryland. The very proud president of the Fraternal Order of Anaroma County Detention Center Officers and Personnel, CWA 2911. Pretty much everything that Obie just said, he's spot on. I mean, you know, if you look at our roles and things, and Andy will change as well, you know, we're bleeding people, you know? And if this helps get people, you know, as Obie said, boots on the ground, boots in my hallways, you know, patrolling our facilities, I'm all for it, you know? Because obviously, we've just taken on more duties and responsibilities with the ICE program up at Ordinance Road, which we support, and, you know, just everything in general, you know? It, they, Obie's people lock them up, and they've got to come somewhere, so they come to us. And my fellow officers, they do one hell of a job, and I am very proud of them. I'm very proud to represent them. And like I said, I wholly support this legislation if it'll help get people in the doors. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Hey, double head. I'm going to start from Mr. Smith first.
How many vacancies do the detention centers have?
The last time I checked was about a week and a half ago, and this is a rough, rough ballpark, but I'd say we're probably about 30 to 35 short, roughly.
And with the police, you have how many positions? And I'll probably ask the administration when they come back up as well, just figured you might know, since you were right there. I think it's, how many police positions? Uniformed officers, yes?
Positions are we short?
No, no. How many police uniform positions total? Somewhere around 700 and miss, personnel, 720?
Yes.
And just to put this on record, I know the administration, over the last couple of years, we've certainly been adding more, but I have always said, and will continue to say, we should have somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,300 to 1,400 uniformed police officers in Anaroma County. If you look at our population compared to other jurisdictions, they are well in excess of, you know, close to 2,000, if not more than 2,000, police officers. Howard County, for example, has half of our population, but yet they have, you know, well over 500 police officers, almost the same as what we have, and we got twice the amount of police, I mean, population that they have. If you look at Baltimore City, they have 700,000 citizens, but yet well over 2,400 police officers. Obviously, it's probably needed, but in our case, in order for us to do more community policing and being much more effective when it comes to deterring crime, we definitely need the personnel, and so you're going to always hear me continue to say that, Anaroma County, when it comes to police officers, should be in a range of 1,300 to 1,400 uniformed police officers. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Walker?
Obie, the number of folks that, has there been any indication, is the number of folks at the administration has talked to you about rehiring? And I'm assuming that you sort of said you're supporting this bill because you feel like they're, I guess the pitch was that if you support this, they're going to be rehiring retirees that will come back and assist alongside of the current staff? Is that...
Yes. The police department recently had a study done.
Right. From the National Association of Chiefs of Police?
Yes. And one of the things that they mentioned was trying to get police officers back out on the street and having someone else in positions such as our OIT position, things like that, that are traditionally held by rank-and-file police officers. So I also believe there's, they're looking at different units, perhaps bringing back our youth activities program, trying to do some more things to reach out to the community that we just cannot do because we don't have the manpower to do them.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I remember I pushed hard about three years ago for the cadet program. Is that still in play?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Because I was kind of hoping that would help, you know, the county weed out, first of all, you have people that would know this is for them in the cadet program, and another thing, too, was help the county weed out people that maybe shouldn't be in the police program. It was like a real good opener for everybody. How are we doing with that?
That's a very good program. Hopefully, it'll be expanded.
Good. Can't beat that, right? Okay. Thanks, guys. Anybody else want to come in and speak on 7817? All right, we're going to close the public hearing on bill number 7817. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7817.
Bill number 7817, an ordinance concerning pensions, general provisions, deferred retirement option programs, fire service retirement plan, police service retirement plan, and detention offers and deputy sheriff's retirement plan.
Any more discussion? Seeing none. Okay, we've got a couple amendments here, so we're going to start off with, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This is a technical amendment to remove repetitive language that was inadvertently added during preparation of the bill.
Move to adopt. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Administration, anything to say?
No, this is just language that should not be included in the bill that was put in for...
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
All right. Let's see. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment clarifies that only drop participants in the fire service retirement plan who retire from a position covered by a collective bargaining agreement are subject to a reduction in benefits if reemployed in any capacity by the county.
Move to adopt. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is just to clarify which members of the fire safety retirement plan are eligible, or, excuse me, will not receive the drop penalty under this legislation. This is a point raised by the auditor at the end of last week, and this will hopefully clarify her concern, and she has raised, and I'm not sure if Ms. Lovett wants to add any more to that.
Kelly Lovett, Office of Law. This amendment is designed to make it clear that all of the drop retirees who are in the police service plan, the detention officers and deputy sheriff's plan, and the fire, drop retirees in the fire service plan who retired from a non-represented position will be now included under 51203. They're going to fall underneath the exceptions there. Basically, what we had, and the auditor pointed out, that we had an exception to an exception, and it was getting too complicated, so we're just rewording the bill so that it's clear to read and bill fit within the category, the general reemployment exception.
So in other words, basically, what it is, is it's fair for everybody. In other words, if it's someone who's not been represented by the union, they get the same opportunity as someone that does?
Well, and there's a distinction in the fire service plan, and maybe Ms. Rhodes wants to jump in here, but...
The fire service plan is not included in this because it was not negotiated with the fire union.
No. The fire service plan is included. What had happened was with IEFF, which is everyone at the rank of captain and below, we had a two-year agreement with them. When we negotiated this with everyone else, we called them in and asked if they would want to be part of it. At this time, they said no, they weren't interested in having this as part of their agreement. So from captains and below, they will continue to have the drop reduction. We also spoke to the battalion chiefs who we were negotiating with. At that time, the battalion chief said, no, we'll talk to you about it next year. So battalion chiefs will continue, if they're rehired, to have a reduction in the drop in their benefits. So it's basically division chiefs and above that would not have any type of reduction in their benefit if they were rehired by the county.
Okay. All right. With that being said, Madam Secretary, want to call the roll on, where are we at? Amendment number two. Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
All right. Let's see. Bill 7817, as amendment would be heard on November 20th of 2017, of 2017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7917.
Bill Number 7917, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer Funds and Supplementary Appropriations.
All right. Mr. Marsick and friends?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table, Stephen Thru from Budget Office, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 7917 transfers $68,100 from the Police Department to the Office of the County Executive. As you'll remember with Bill 6917, we, this fund will cover the position for minority outreach that was included in Bill 6917. This legislation also recognizes revenues received in the Grant Special Revenue Fund in the amount of $497,800. If you have the answering questions the council has.
How much was that money you're talking, $69,000?
$68,100 from the Police Department to the County Executive's Office.
Okay. All right. Anybody got anything to say? All right. So we're going to open up the public hearing on 7917. Anybody want to chime in? Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on Bill Number 7917. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7917.
Bill Number 7917, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer Funds and Supplementary Appropriations.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on Bill Number 7917?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 7917 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, read the title of Bill 8017.
Bill Number 8017, An Ordinance Concerning Rules for Practice and Procedure, Board of Appeals, Meetings, and Participation.
Mr. Marsick?
This is your bill, Mr. Grasso.
Yeah, well, it came through me, through the Board of Appeals. Okay. So the chairman.
Yes, sir.
How you doing today, buddy?
I'm doing well. How are you, Mr. Grasso?
Good. Give us a name for the record, please.
Rick Forgough, Hanover, Maryland.
All right. Give us a scoop. Let everybody know what this bill is about.
The long and the short of this is, right now, the current rules say that if a board member misses the first meeting of any hearing, he cannot participate in the rest of the hearing. It's a bit restrictive, especially when you have a set of hearings that are very, very long. We've had some that have gone 17, 25 different hearings, and if you miss the first one, you're off.
Right.
And I think that giving, we think, as a board, allowing a little more flexibility there is beneficial, not just to the process, but to the people who are having their hearings appealed, or the appeals. So what we'd like to do is have the rule set up so that if you miss both of the first two hearings, you're off. We've had a couple cases where board members have missed long hearings because they missed the first one. If we can make it so that they are present for one of the first two, then I think that that's more fair for the process.
Okay. So all you guys are in consent with this? All seven of yous are fine with it?
Yes, sir. It was unanimous.
Sounds good, like a plan to me.
Mr. Chair.
Good. I hit Mr. Walker first, and Mr. Trumbauer.
Mr. Forgough, so I'm assuming that your meetings are recorded. I haven't been to one of them, but they're recorded, correct?
They are.
So the idea, the intent is that one of your members could go back at the recording and listen to everything that was said?
Yes. In fact, we do that regularly.
So what would be the problem with them missing three of the 15 meetings, or four of them? Why is there an issue with just one versus not being present for any of the hearings, essentially, and being able to listen to them all recording? I mean, you're still gathering, that person's still gathering the same information and data that you all are at the beginning of the meeting?
I beg your pardon. You are, but I think the first couple hearings are probably the most important ones to be at.
Okay.
You know, the gist of the case gets laid out in pretty, in pretty good detail there. And, you know, you can listen to the audio, and you can get the details from the audio, but actually, being there is kind of important.
So if, let's just say, for example, this passes, and you're allowed to miss the first meeting, could somebody miss the fifth meeting and still vote at the end?
Yes, sir.
You can. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Forgough, congratulations on becoming chair.
Thank you.
And I was wondering, similar to Mr. Walker, if this passes, and let's say, there's a 15-night, a 15-hearing case, and I attend the first two, but those are the only ones I attend, could I still participate in the ruling? If this passes?
The way, technically, yes. Although, right now, the way the process is set up, the chair has the discretion of removing someone from a case for absence.
Okay.
Or repeated absences.
Yeah. Okay. So putting aside the requirement for the first meeting, there is no other attendance requirement that's currently law?
Right now, it's at the discretion of the chairman.
But you have discretion.
Yes.
Okay. This seems like a positive step forward.
Has discretion of the chair been exercised? Is that something that's done regularly to exclude people from voting?
Well, for this board, we have had exemplary attendance for this board. We have only had one instance in the nearly three years that we've been sitting on this panel where a board member was warned about attendance. And that was largely due to unavoidable work requirements.
But they weren't removed from the final decision-making process?
They weren't because they didn't go below a certain threshold.
And that was, I'm assuming that was set by the chair?
It was. That was Chairman Brittenbach.
Okay.
And he set that at, I believe, the threshold he set was 50%.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
I was going to let the auditor chime in, because she was the one who had the concern, and then I was going to make a motion to hold the bill, but I want to have her speak first.
I was just going to point out that before the section that's being amended, it says only those members who have actually heard all the evidence and testimony in an appeal shall participate in the decision unless all parties to the appeal shall agree otherwise, except the chair can let them listen to the recordings and the official stenographer's recording for any missed hearing. So you were talking about an example where they could miss, be in the first couple meetings, and then miss the rest of them, but I think they would have to at least listen to the testimony. Am I wrong? Only those members who have actually heard all the evidence and testimony shall participate in the decision unless all parties to the appeal shall agree otherwise. That part's not being changed.
No.
So if, in your example, they were going to miss the rest of the meetings, I think they'd still have to listen to the recording of the testimony to be able to participate. That's my reading of this.
Mr. Trumbauer, if you're pushing it out, like you want to say something?
Well, I mean, no one's looking over their shoulder watching them listen to the audio. So I mean, it's the honor system, clearly, right? And the chair has...
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that that's in there. They're supposed to hear everything.
Yeah. And the chair, ultimately, regardless, the chair has discretion, it sounds like, according to his testimony, to ask someone not to participate.
Correct.
Correct. Correct. Yes.
So, Mr. Pruski, were you intending to work on an amendment to address this?
Yes. All right. So the legal counsel for the Board of Appeals was talking with our counsel, and nothing was decided before the meeting. So that's why I was going to make a motion to hold it, so that we can address the issue with the attendance.
There's a slightly different issue with the first hearing. The way the deletion was submitted to us, it creates the unintended consequence that if there is one hearing, it could be that someone could still participate, and that was not really the intent of what the Board of Appeals wants to do. So there is going to be an amendment. Not at the next meeting, we're going to ask to have this held till the 20th, and then we'll have the, I just got it right before the meeting, so I, and I don't see any issue with what was said, so we're just going to, in terms of docket management, I guess we'll say we're, it's going to come back on the 20th.
And if, do you want to?
Yeah. Mr. Middlebrooke.
Yes. Good evening. I think that we have no problem with what you're saying, this, Tate, as far as if it's only one meeting, and somebody misses it, yeah, it's kind of hard for them to make a decision on that. And just to reiterate what Mr. Forgough says, we have seven people on the board with all sorts of different, various backgrounds, mindsets, and everything, and we find it really is imperative for all of us to be there for our deliberation meetings, to be able to discuss everything, because what I think Mr. Forgough might not think about, and then you just add to it, it's like you compound exponentially how people think, and you come to a really good conclusion at that point. That's one of the reasons why we think this is a very important bill.
Sure.
So I'm going to make a motion to hold, based upon, and then we'll have an amendment?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. After the public hearing. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So we're going to open up the public hearing on 8017. If anybody wants to chime in, seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 8017.
She's going.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the Bill Number 8017.
Bill Number 8017, An Ordinance Concerning Rules for Practice and Procedure, Board of Appeals, Meetings, and Participation.
Okay. Mr. Pruski, saying you want to make the motion to hold?
Till November 20th, 2017.
All right. You got to get a second.
Second. I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All right. Madam Secretary, we're going to call the roll on holding Bill 8017, 80-17, till November 20th, 2017.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 8017 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8117.
Bill Number 8117, An Ordinance Concerning Real Property Taxes Tax Credits, Public Safety Officer Tax Credits.
All right. Mr. Marsick and crowd?
Yes, my bill, Mr. Chairman. It's my, it's my bill, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Walker, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
It's wearing on. Mr. Walker, bring it on.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all. I'm introducing this bill this evening for a couple of purposes. This was brought to my attention that it was passed as an enabling legislation at the state level via House Bill 979. And I think it's important for a couple of reasons. One, from my perspective, this property tax credit would be a thank you to our public safety officers in the county. Two, I believe it would be, it's an incentive, an incentive, as we just heard during the previous bill, that we have an issue with staffing, an issue with recruitment, an issue with keeping our current employees here in our county, and with filling the slots that we have. And third, I think it was also mentioned that, in that testimony, that our salaries aren't necessarily as competitive as they could be with the surrounding jurisdictions. And so I view this as a situation where we can assist our public safety officers with their service here to our county. And fourth, I think this speaks to a broader policy, a discussion that we've had over the past seven years that I've been on the council, about how we have a number of folks who serve our county as a first responder, but who are unable to afford to live in the county. So this piece of legislation offers an opportunity for those who want to live here to do that. And so I'm putting this forward, and I hope that you all support it. I know that there are some concerns that were raised by the auditor during her blue letter, and I have a couple of amendments to address a few of those, and I think the administration does, too, potentially even some similar amendments. We'll debate those at that time, but I thank you for your consideration.
Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table, Darcy Gooden, Karen McQuade from the Office of Finance, John Hammond from Budget, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. The County Executive supports tax cuts in general, as you all know very well, and has consistently supported improvements to public safety compensation. Public safety personnel have received larger pay increases than any other employees in the county in each of the County Executive's budgets. This bill, however, has several problems that we think need to be addressed. First, the bill circumvents the collective bargaining process by allowing the council to increase a benefit to certain unions outside of the agreed-upon negotiation process. When a benefit such as this is offered outside of a budget cycle, it could have the unintended repercussions for future pay increases for teachers, public safety employees, or other county employees. In addition, it could establish a dangerous precedent for unions going to council for anything they want outside of the collective bargaining process. Finally, it could cause out-of-county union members to seek some sort of parity during, those members who live outside of the county, seek some sort of parity during the collective bargaining process, because this bill creates two different classes within the unions, the haves and the have-nots, of those who would receive this benefit and those who would not. Second, this bill creates an opportunity for people to stack tax credits with other credits in the county, such as a homestead tax credit. Third, this bill will be an invitation to other interest groups to seek similar credits, and opens up questions about fairness for those who don't currently receive this credit, teachers, nurses, veterans, people with disabilities, pet owners, church volunteers, could all have a case that they deserve a tax credit in this county. Fourth, as written, this bill violates Article 15 of the Maryland Constitution, requires property taxes to be assessed uniformly. I believe you all either have or have seen the Attorney General's opinion on this as well, that resulted in House Bill 979 last year. This could invite a lawsuit against the county to challenge the constitutionality of this bill. Fifth, as drafted, the bill does not require the property to be located in the county just to be owned by a public safety officer. I think this could be corrected with some drafting changes. Sixth, and most significantly, this bill is a tax increase for more than 210,000 property owners in the county, in order to benefit roughly 1,400 to 3,500 property owners in the county. This is clearly a tax shift and not a tax cut. Under Mr. Walker's scheme with this bill, there will be a tax increase for over 99% of taxpayers, property owners in the county. Lating these concerns, we'll be offering several amendments to the bill that we'll address at the appropriate time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marsick, you ran through a list of objections to the bill, but you're also offering some amendments. Do you, do you feel that the administration can get behind this bill with some amendments, or are you kind of completely opposed to it for the list of reasons?
No, I think there's an opportunity here. You know, the County Executive has repeatedly said he supports tax cuts, and if we're able to turn this into a true tax cut, I'm sure he'd be very supportive of that.
I mean, that's not your, that's not your entire calculus, whether you can call it a tax cut or not, though.
It's going to take some work. Well, right now, it's a major tax increase, and that's a problem.
I'm not, I'm not interested in what we call it, I'm interested in the policy. And we just heard another debate on another bill about, and everyone seemed to be on the same page, that everybody wants us to have more officers. And we've added more officers in the budget process, but my understanding, again, from past testimony, is that it's hard to fill those slots, or if they do fill them, they lose equal or greater amount through attrition. I mean, I'm guessing that's close to accurate in some way. So to me, I'm looking at this through a policy lens, and if we, if we want to make being an Anaronno County police officer more attractive to men and women in general, you know, we need to do something, right? So we could pay them more money. That is through the arbitration, the collective bargaining, obviously. We can do this, which you raised some objections to, from the process standpoint, but my understanding from how Mr. Walker introduced this, is there was state-enabling legislation, and I remember this being discussed at Mako, so it must be legally sufficient from the state's point of view, because they enabled us to do it.
If there are limits put onto the bill.
So, okay. So now we're getting somewhere. So there need to be limits in order to make this conform with what's allowed?
And that's one of our amendments overall.
Okay. Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask you about was, you said that these stackable credits. But I think, I should have read this while you were saying that, but I think the auditor addressed, she had something in her letter that said that it couldn't, it couldn't be packaged together with other credits, or am I misinterpreting?
I believe it says it can't be put together with other, what do they call them? Optional, optional credits.
So that's exclusive of the homestead credit, then?
Right.
Which is a different classification of tax credit under the property tax code.
Okay.
This is an optional tax credit, just as there are several others that are in our code, that the homeowner, if they file the verification that it's their principal residence, they can receive the homestead credit.
Sure.
But then there's a whole list of other optional ones. We have them for solar energy.
Yeah, right.
We have them for geothermal, whatever.
So they can't be, those can't be combined?
Right. Exactly. So you can't have one of those other ones and have, and try to get this one.
So if you're a police officer, you can't get a tax credit for solar panels and being a police officer? You have to choose.
That's correct.
But you can still take your homestead credit, and you could apply either this or the solar credit, or any other optional one? Okay.
It's my understanding that this is worded the same way that all the other optional credits are, it doesn't allow you to stack them.
Okay. And then finally, before I give up the mic, you raised a understandable concern that if we do this for one class of employees, it may cause repercussions with others. But I don't know the answer to this. I mean, would the state need to enable us to give tax credits to teachers or to any of the other ones?
Yes, they would.
And we do not currently have that authority.
And not that I'm aware of. No, we don't derive any taxing authority unless, or the ability to get credits, unless the state gives it to us.
That's what I've learned, is seven years as a council member.
Right.
Okay.
Because everybody would get one.
All right. Well, call me optimistic, but I think we can bring this together. Mr. Chairman? I feel good about it.
Hold on, Ms. Fink. You done, Mr. Earl?
I am. I am, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Ms. Fink.
What's the total cost?
The estimates that we came up with were, I believe included in the blue letter, but again, it's, these are dependent on those who participate in this tax credit.
So it's the max?
Well, the max, if everyone participated, I think it would be close to $8 million.
That's assuming they take the full 2,500.
But that's assuming that everyone takes the full 2,500 and everyone lives in the county. The numbers that we've provided, the current estimate is that there are roughly 1,400, close to 1,500, police officers, firefighters, volunteer firefighters, detention officers, sheriffs, who live in the county, who could take advantage of this credit, and that number comes out to roughly 3.7, 3.8 million dollars. Now presumably, many of the volunteer firefighters would get their 50 points to become eligible for this credit, who are not included in that calculation, and again, presuming many of them currently live in the county.
And the volunteer firefighters that get that credit, is that, I know before we had a bill in front of us and a big conversation of whether, you know, an office hour for a volunteer is worth as much as an hour on the truck, if you will. Are all the hours the same?
Under the current bill, our reading is that it's not, and we've offered amendment to clarify it so that the hours, people reaching 50 points get 50 points and they qualify.
No matter what they're doing, whether they're riding a truck, whether they're doing the bingo, whether they're doing office work, supporting?
Under the law that we passed, they can receive points for administrative duties for riding the truck. If they receive 50 points, again, we'll discuss it when we come to our amendment, but the way we read the bill now is that there are only certain duties that would be covered by the volunteers in order to get those 50 points.
Okay. So then every year, obviously at 3.7, 3.8 million changes every year. In one year, it could be 3.5, and all of a sudden, we have a huge influx of new officers, firefighters, and then all of a sudden, it goes to 4 million, or a bunch leave and we're down to 3.2 million.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Smith.
Are jurisdictions leveraging this capability?
None that I know of. I know Baltimore City was exploring it a while ago because they were actually authorized before the rest of the counties were authorized, but I don't believe they've done it yet, as far as I know.
They have a pending bill right now. It's in committee, so it's moving, but it's moving slower.
Is the, I know the bargaining and arbitration processes where a lot of this is sort of ironed out. Outside of that, what other efforts are being done to increase either the recruiting or sustainment of public safety officials who work for the county?
Well, the county executive has increased the pay by, I believe it's about 9% since coming into office for police officers, I know off the top of my head. We've added over 75 public safety employees into the county's budget over the last three years. There are efforts that I know you're aware of with Mr. Matthews, who's been involved with police and fire recruitment efforts. The county executive has recently offered to put forward in the negotiation process this year a bonus for those who are buying homes, first-time home buyers in the county. And I'm sure Ms. Rhodes, she's not here anymore, but she could provide more of the details on the recruitment, but we could get you more details on that as well.
So with these amendments, would the administration support the modified? In theory, would they be supportive of this bill, if it was modified to address some of your concerns?
I think once all the concerns are addressed, we would be supportive of the bill, but there are a lot of concerns with this bill that need to be addressed.
And are all of them in these amendments?
No.
Oh. So if we pass all of the amendments, then they would not be, the administration would not be supportive?
I think there are more concerns that need to be addressed to deal with, especially the taxing issue that we discussed as far as the impact on the 99% of taxpayers by this bill.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Fink.
Is Ms. Rhodes gone? I don't see her. The, I mean, I think the sponsor's comments that we want to do something nice, we want to thank them, I think that makes a lot of sense and, you know, certainly gives justification for this bill, but, you know, we start talking about an incentive to become an officer or firefighter, I mean, does this really play into that? You know, I know when I'm hiring in my other job, we try to do all these, you know, these different incentives, you know, whether it's supplemental insurance and all that, and it seems at the end of the day, you know, everybody's always concerned about, you know, what's the most important thing is that salary number. You know, it's the salary number, it's the salary number. How much are we making? And when you get into these types of other benefits, is that really a decision-maker? So if we really want to incentivize, you know, some folks to come into this field, into this county, you know, if that was the true reason, I think we'd be much better off saying, hey, you know, we're going to give every officer, firefighter, you know, $2,000 raise or $2,500 raise, you know, across the board, and then we're going to increase, you know, all entry level, $2,500 too, moving forward, and they'll always get that. I mean, if we truly want to use this as an incentive, I think we'd be much better off taking that money, which is probably a lot more than 3.8 million, but adding it to their salaries, because I think personally, that's a much bigger sale than, hey, if you have a house in Anarono County and your property taxes are over $2,500, you can get up to $2,500, so.
Mr. Chair.
That's my thought on that.
Ms. Smith.
Just a, I know, not that I'm necessarily, I haven't read all, every single amendment yet, but there are some folks that look at more than just the salary. I can tell you, you know, medical benefits were important to me when I was looking at my job, retirement, things like that. Maybe when I was young, I probably didn't think about it as much, but as I've gotten older, I started to realize, oh crap, I'm getting old, I need people to fix my knees. And so, you know, things like, you know, tax credits or medical or education, for example, they, you know, for a growing family, they really start to think at the big picture. I was talking earlier and mentioning that, I mean, the good thing about the salary, if you're a police officer or even a firefighter or detention center, I mean, thank God for overtime, right, because you certainly will make some overtime, so the salary piece, hopefully, at least, obviously, they would like to make more from a salary standpoint, but the overtime does at least provide some sort of avenue to be able to address or get some additional revenue. But these other fringe benefits, maybe they could convince some folks to either stay or recruiting. It can certainly help in that standpoint, at least from my perspective.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Marzick, going back to one of your arguments in opposition to this was that by establishing this tax credit, that it somehow raises the taxes for other individuals in the county. As I recall, the administration has supported tax credits for other purposes, which has created potentially similar issues. Why is there, why is the administration, it appears that the administration is inconsistent when they would support a tax credit for historic house or rebuilt house versus this? Could you explain to me maybe why you feel like this is unique in your opposition?
Sure. The bill you're referring to from Mr. Grasso really wouldn't have an impact.
I didn't mean that specifically, just like the general, because you've supported other tax credits besides that one.
Yeah, I mean, the bill from Mr. Grasso put forward actually doesn't have an impact on the taxes collected, excuse me, it doesn't have an impact on the taxes because that would be new revenue coming to the county that wouldn't come in from those assessments, so there wouldn't be any impact on that.
But other tax credits that you've supported?
The historic tax credit, I think, was a bill that we had worked with Councilman Trumpauer on. I think the real problem with this bill is that you have a group of people, in this case, the public safety officials, who we all want to support, and we've, you know, continued to support, but we want tax relief across the board. You know, we had a property tax cut down here that was tax relief across the board that you and other members in the council didn't want to support. We had tried to push for that. We'd be very supportive if we bring that back in across the board.
Mr. Marzick, but wasn't the press, to be fair, the county executive hosted a press conference with three members of this council and said that he was no longer supporting or pursuing the property tax cut, and he was going to switch to the income tax cut.
Correct, because you said you wouldn't support it.
So to try to say that, to try.
Well, we knew that you and the three Democrats on the council weren't going to support the bill.
Actually, it was more than that, Mr. Marzick. There was no vote taken, so you don't know who supported it or who didn't.
You told us you wouldn't support it.
This is a different issue. What we're talking about here is property tax credits. We're not talking about income tax credits that you're trying to take political swings at me over. What we're talking about is a political tax credit for the public safety official.
We're talking about the property tax.
And I'm asking for you, I'm asking you how the administration supports tax credits for one group of individuals, but now all of a sudden, it's inconsistent, appears to be inconsistent because it's not supporting tax credit for another group.
No, we are supportive of tax cuts for these folks. Absolutely, we're supportive of it.
Just not this one?
We want to have across the board, we want to have across-the-board tax cuts. No, absolutely. We absolutely are supportive of it.
You're supportive of this bill?
Not of the way it's structured right now. We can't support an unconstitutional bill.
But you have an amendment that you're going to prepare, that you've, we're going to review and vote on, and I have one as well.
Correct.
That will remove that obligation, that objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that makes sense. Ms. Fink.
Just a quick question. Mr. Marzick, you continue to call it a tax increase. And how are you getting to that?
Because under the revenue cap in the county, the people who are not included in this credit, so roughly 1,500 people are going to be receiving this credit, and there's an estimated 210,000 other property owners in the county who will not be receiving the credit, they would have to make up that 3.8 to $8 million number in revenue coming into the county.
And when we've done it, I'm assuming here, but when it's been done in the past, it seems like it's just been much smaller numbers. And I don't remember ever something being $3.8 million, whether it was the historic tax credit, and I mean, that was new income, but certainly a much smaller number. Is the concern here because it's such a big number and it's going to be so much that's passed on to those other 220,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Historic tax credit's been $0, I believe is the number. And this, I think this number totals all tax credits in the county combined, the estimate for this bill.
Yeah, Mr. Fink, just to give you a perspective, as Mr. Marzick said, if this bill were adopted in its present form, and we made some reasonable estimates about how many people would have, how many people own property that would qualify for the full credit, how many people actually own property, and make some adjustments for the fact that there are perhaps over 2,000 folks that may be eligible for this credit at a worst case, but then we pare it down by making some of these assumptions, we've gotten it down to perhaps 1,750 eligible participants, making some reasonable assumptions, and that translates into the $3.7 million, which would be the largest optional tax credit that the county offers. We, I think there are about a dozen or so optional tax credits that the county presently offers for various categories.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Walker.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify, we keep talking about two different sides of this coin. The tax revenue of $3.7 million is a loss unless you maximize under the property tax cap. If the administration chooses to maximize under the property tax cap, that gets spread to the other taxpayers. However, in that case, if that's done, then the $3.8 million impact goes down to $100,000 of net impact because you're going to collect the revenues from other people. So it's either you don't maximize under the tax cap and you give up $3.7 million of revenue, or you do maximize under the tax cap and the fiscal impact is $100,000. Am I correct?
But the impact on the other taxpayers is what Mr. Marzick was saying.
That's right. I just wanted to clarify, we have two different issues here, and we're kind of putting them all into the same pile of fiscal impact. You either have this one, or you do this, and you have a lesser fiscal impact to the county, so.
Right. The value of this, as presently proposed, we've estimated the value at $3.7 million. That's what it would cost to give this credit. We have two options, as you said. We can try to recoup that lost revenue, and that would be $3.7 million of lost revenue to the budget, or we can try to recoup it, and that would be a tax increase to all the other taxpayers in the county.
Correct. I just, we were having all this list of impacts. You can have one, or you can have the other, but it's not both. I just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Smith.
Mr. Hammond, the, so it appears unlikely that we're going to recoup it by spreading it across, just because we haven't done it in the past with other tax credits that we've offered. I'm not saying that that may not happen, I'm just saying it appears unlikely.
No, I think we have recouped it through the tax cap calculation.
So my question, how, over the last couple of years, our budget, what would you say our budget has grown by new growth in Anarono County's overall budget? Like over the last, let's say, five years, on average, per year, how much revenue, additional revenue have we gained through growth, you know, new economic sort of businesses, things like that?
Our revenues lately, because of the, sorry, I'm getting a cramp. Our revenues, because of the relatively low rate of inflation, which drives the property tax collection, which is 44% of our revenue, have been growing somewhere around 3.5% a year.
Dollar amount, what is that? For our budget? Somewhere around 40, 50 million?
Forty, anywhere between 45 and maybe in a really great year, a wonderful year, 60 million.
Yep, yep. So every year, we, our budget, at least certainly over the last five years, we've grown revenue.
Right.
So if this was implemented, that new growth would absorb this, would it not?
Well, first things first, debt service gets first cut of any increment. Our debt services, I think, grew about $7 million last year. We have this wonderful thing called Maintenance of Effort for the Board of Education. That consumes about $7 million a year. So we've got, you know, and on and on and on, we've got these built-in increases that we have to deal with. So any new log that you want to put on the fire has implications.
Right, has implications. Okay, great. I just wanted, I was just curious about the growth. All right, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. One last clarification question for me, and I guess it goes to the sponsor, but you guys weigh in if you want. There was some talk before about it's set up for the primary residents, but people could make some maneuvering in order to qualify or something. The way I'm reading the blue letter, it says, "The bill defines the dwelling as a legal primary residence of a public safety officer." Does it have to be the same public safety officer that is applying for the credit?
Yes.
Okay. So there's not a situation where a public safety officer can own other properties that he rents, or he or she rents to other public safety officers, and then that owner is applying multiple times or anything like that?
Certainly not my intent.
Yeah. I mean, because I read it pretty clearly, that you, my interpretation was, you have to own the property and it has to be your legal primary residence, and you have to be a public safety officer.
Yes, you have to be a public safety officer employed by Anarono County, and you have to have that residence as your primary residence.
Okay. So am I, did you, so you don't have any concerns about that part, or do you?
It needs to be clarified. The way the bill is written now, we think it could, it could fall under Annapolis City Police, Annapolis Fire Department could fall under it. That's why we, again, part of our amendments that we'll address it. But the issue I had raised with Mr. Fink or Mr. Smith was, the number that we're calculating the impact on is based on 14, roughly 1,500 people.
Yeah.
And we think that number can go up based on the fact that volunteer firefighters, who again, presumably live in the county, would be able to get to 50 points, and they're not part of the calculation now.
Well, certainly.
Because there are, the calculation's based on those who achieved last year, it's like 500 and some volunteer firefighters.
But if you get a tax credit out of it, you have an incentive to get 50 points.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Just to put that in perspective, if I could, in talking to the fire chief, he tells me that we have 1,240 county residents that are on his volunteer list, but then he breaks that down and says that 500, 494 are what he would consider to be active volunteers, and then he's got another 542 that he calls administrative volunteers. These are the folks that aren't riding the equipment but are in the back.
Look, I remember the debate we had a year ago or whatever, it's still very fresh.
Mr. Chair.
But they're volunteers and could qualify if they get the 50 points.
Actually, that's not accurate, Mr. Hammond. Basically, the way the bill's drafted is it limits the people who are earning 50 points to those that are running calls. Those points are earned by making calls, either fire calls, EMS calls, or they're working a shift in the station as a responder. So my intent was not to include, was to include only the individuals who are actually riding apparatus.
So the folks?
That's the three, that's the three points that, they would have to get points for those three categories that total 50 in order for them to qualify for the tax credit.
Okay. Last year, I believe, we had 511 folks qualify for the 50 points. So what you're saying is it would be some smaller subset of that because some of those folks that got their 50 points?
Correct.
Because they were the officer?
Correct.
The president of the volunteer company or whatever else.
Correct. My intent was only to capture those individuals that are riding apparatus or responding to calls.
Okay. With that being said, let me throw one or two caveats in here. Can we, we just do, it's just credits, can we actually do deductions? So if it was a $2,500 deduction, it's not the same as just a, basically a credit which is a full base value of 2,500. You see what I'm saying? In other words, is there a possible way that you can actually get a deduction instead of a credit? Because if deduction's $2,500, then, and you're in a 25% tax bracket, 28% tax bracket, you're really getting 25% of that. With a credit, you're giving the full amount, correct?
I think we're talking apples and oranges.
Well, no, I'm saying, and isn't there a way that you could set that up in the tax thing? I know, I understand what's with property tax, but isn't there a way it could set up as a deduction also, or no?
Well, a way to look at this proposal is to translate $2,500 into an assessable value equivalent, which in this case.
Like $10,000 bucks.
In this case, this is, this would be a reduction in your assessable value of about $275,000. $275,000 assessment translates into a $2,500 tax payment. So you would be giving a exemption of $275,000 on someone's taxable property assessment under this bill because it translates into $2,500 of. under this bill because it translates into $2,500 of tax savings.
It's a direct thing, you know? That's what I'm saying. Because like, you're like when you buy an electric car or whatever the case, you get a credit, you know? It's state and Maryland gives you like 3,000 bucks, and it's, check comes right from the controllers, 3,000 bucks. It's just that simple. It's not like a deduction, it's a straight credit. I got you. I got what you're saying. Second thing I wanted to ask you too, is like what Councilman Smith was talking about, when we were looking at the $60 million that we're at, where is the teacher's pension now? Because I know we're responsible for that. What is the number that you're actually, off the top of your head, we're funding teachers' pension now?
The county contribution to teachers' pensions is somewhere around 22, $23 million annually, and realistically, it's going to increase, surprise, surprise, because now, under the state's teacher pension funding, the counties are responsible for the, the ongoing cost of, the normal cost of the pension, the amount of the cost of the pension that accumulates every year, and the state is responsible for the unfunded portion, which is the past service liability.
So we got the full, because I mean, everybody was so happy when we had the casino money, and they kept saying, well, where's the money going and blah, blah, blah? And I have to explain to them, go to the website, blah, blah, blah. And, and then it gets down to the teacher's pension. I remember when we started out, we weren't getting hit with the full amount, but we are on the full amount now, right?
Well, we're not, we're not being hit by the full amount of, of what the normal cost is. We're still, we haven't gotten to that point. That's why it's going to increase to get up to that normal amount. But prior to the, what, prior to 2014, we weren't paying, there was no charge to the counties for teacher pensions. It was 100% funded by the state.
And it keeps going. So if they ever say to you, you're going to pay everything right now, I guess, other than the unfunded liability, it would be maybe, what do you think, 30 million, 28 million?
Well, the unfunded liability cost is considerable. I mean, the state...
They'd still be stuck in, I mean, in other words, they've hit us with the max that they're, that they're doing right now in the teacher's pension.
I wouldn't say that. We're not paying the full normal cost, and that's what the policy is, that we should be paying the full normal cost, but we're not there yet.
Okay. Because one of the things I always do is I keep thinking to ourselves, well, we got this extra money coming in, how do we spend it, you know? Where can we save people? What are we going to do? But it always seems like, when you got extra revenue and somebody just whips a zinger at us, you know, like this teacher's pension that we never had to deal with before. And it eats up that $60 million pretty quick. Okay, I got it. All right. With that being, Mr. Pruega.
Yeah, just, just for a moment, I know we'll probably be discussing this again, but I, just for the record, in this first discussion, I wanted to express, I think I have basically three concerns plus, I think, a question for the sponsor. Let me, let me just start with that if I could. Mr. Walker, you, I think you listed four reasons why at the beginning of your presentation, basically, I didn't get them all completely, but basically you said, we were saying thank you, right? And then this would be an incentive to increase or I guess maintain staffing. It would be the equivalent of, it would be compensation, even though it's not directly salary, it would be compensation. And I think you said that there would be, it would provide an incentive for first responders who can't afford to live here to be able to, to live in the county. And I guess my, my question is, wouldn't a salary increase, as opposed to this approach, wouldn't an increase in salary actually accomplish all the, all those things?
I guess that's one route, but that is not something that the council controls, Mr. Pruega.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Fair enough. Let me just quickly mention three concerns that I have. First is, I share the concern that this is a tax shift. It's instead of, it's, it's a tax break for some, but it's a tax raise for most people in the county. And secondly, I do share a concern about the constitutionality of it, even though the, the state has weighed in by their enabling legislation. I still have some constitutional concerns, which I can express later on, or I can, I can develop a little bit, bit more in discussion. But thirdly, the one that hasn't been mentioned that I want to mention is, I, I'm concerned about this actually creating, creating special classes of persons who are eligible for, for privileges. And I believe that there's a problem in doing so because it kind of violates just an equality before the law, a principle. I think it's foreseeable that treating persons differently based on their status as specialized civil servants in this case, could lead to jealousies and rivalries and discontent. And as a witness of that, I, I, I did receive a email today saying, "Dear Mr. Pruega, I feel that the proposed $2,500 property tax should also include social workers. Social workers are also at risk of bodily harm. They usually travel alone, do not carry a weapon, and perform an essential service." And, you know, the, the enabling legislation aside, I'm, I'm really speaking to a, trying to speak to a point of the creation of rivalries and perhaps discontent when you create different classes of people. So that's, that's, that's a concern as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. This has been quite interesting. All right. So with that all being said, we're going to open up the public hearing on 8117. This ought to be good. And let's see, we're going to call down, let's see, Mr. Tom Gardner, I know that name. O'Brien Atkinson, that sounds familiar. And Waldorf, I'm sorry, I can't, it's, the ink's a little messed up there if I might catch the first name.
Dale.
Dale?
He was just up here.
Sorry about that, Dale. Sorry about it, buddy. Look, it's, it's, I've had a long night, man. Seven o'clock in the morning, Johnny boy start, well, six actually.
John, just don't call me late for dinner, we're good.
There you go. Okay. So with that being said, we're going to go, start off with the first person, name, address, in two minutes, and you get the zinger. Mr. Gardner, you're on.
Hello, my name's Tom Gardner, live at 608 Yearland Court, Severn, Maryland. Mr. Chairman, Councilman, thank you for this opportunity to testify. First, let me say a profound respect and admiration for our first responders. Having spent 21 of my 23 years in military service as combat or combat support, I understand the fortitude it takes to respond on call. You know, it takes a special individual, when you get called, to run towards danger and not away from it. That, you know, you're inherent, you know, what God gives you is fleet, you know, fear and flight. There's no finer group of men or women that serve Anaronda County than Anaronda County's first responders. While this tax credit sounds provin, promising, this legislation divides this group depending on where you live. And Mr. Smith addressed, you know, when he went to work, they offered it across the board, whereas this legislation eliminates people who live outside the county where it wouldn't apply to them. Or if you own an apartment, there's no benefit there. I think, you know, the time to address these compensations would be, you know, the budget and the annual meetings where it should be applied across the board. And if I did my calculations correctly, because our volunteer firefighters aren't paid, I think the total cost is, if you gave everyone across the board on that list, it was like $4.9 million at 25%. So I would much rather support that. As a true Republican and conservative, I, you know, I feel it's a, give a tax credit across the board and give everyone that relief. So everyone wins and everyone should benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Obie, name, address, two minutes. Not like nobody that'll know who you are.
Corporal O'Brien Atkinson, President of the Fraternal Order Police, Anaronda County, Double Day Drive, Arnold, Maryland. I think the primary purpose of government and of taxation is to provide for public safety. I think that I was wrong when I said we have 720 funded positions. I believe it's up to 745. However, of the 695 positions, we do have filled, I believe, 30 are in the academy. We have well over 30 who are out injured or, or out of duty, out of service. This bill will keep police officers in the communities that they serve. We're losing a lot of police officers who move across the bridge seeking more affordable housing. They're leaving Anaronda County. We want these gentlemen and ladies in Anaronda County driving around in marked police cars to fulfill the oath that's been taken to provide for public service. There's been a lot of talk about the collective bargaining process, and yes, ideally, we should have increased our starting salary. We have increased the starting salary by 9% since the time County Executive Shoe has been in office, and we've gone from 44,156 to 46,855, starting in this December. And we are dead last behind Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Howard County, Prince George's County, Montgomery County. We're dead last. And, you know, it's, we have difficulty hiring minorities and females, and with a lot of the testimony we've heard tonight, I'm not surprised. We need to go the extra mile to get people to come here to Anaronda County, and we're just not doing it. Two out of the last three negotiation sessions, we were forced into arbitration. We prevailed once, the county prevailed once, but we shouldn't have to go to arbitration. We don't want to go to arbitration. We want to sit down with the administration, we want to talk about the problems, and we want to hash those out. This bill, although outside of negotiations, I believe...
I'm going to kill you, Obie, because I'm not getting lit up.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can I ask him a question?
Please do.
Since, thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Atkinson, since, for better, for worse, you are the, the face of the collective bargaining for the police unit. And I'm wondering, we heard the administration expressed some concern about that. You alluded to it in your comments just now. But I'm, I'm curious, in your opinion, if, if this bill or some version of it were to pass, and, and let's call this a benefit, and, and your members received a benefit, are you not worried that that would, would hurt you in, in that process? Because if it did go to arbitration, the arbiter would say, oh, well, you know, you got this and now you're asking for more? I mean, is, is that something that, that you guys have thought about, or?
Yes, and I believe we're in such a position that a tax credit such as this, although it would benefit our police officers, it certainly won't affect our position in negotiations. We're at the bottom of the barrel, and we're constantly striving to be at the top, or, or the middle. We want to be average. I think that, you know, when you talk about collective bargaining, collective bargaining didn't seem to matter when there were, when our healthcare benefits were being attacked. But that was 2012, and the county was getting ready to go bankrupt. Since that time, we've had the largest tax cut in county history, the largest fee cut in county history, $75 million fee cut. I don't know where that's being made up from. I guess more revenue to the county. But the money, I believe, needs to be looked at, absolutely. We need to address these things in negotiations, but it takes two parties to negotiate an agreement.
But just to summarize, so you, you're not concerned, you don't see any negative repercussions in, in the binding arbitration process for this?
Prior to, yeah, I would say no, absolutely no, no repercussions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ralph, thank.
Quick question. If you could have this property tax credit or a $2,500 raise across the board for everyone, what would you go with?
I would certainly like a $2,500 across the board pay raise. However, that is something that has to be negotiated, that has to be worked out.
No, I understand. And then, in your opinion, do you think, you know, to my point earlier, raising salaries $2,500, is that more attractive to, you know, that new candidate that's coming in, or is it the tax credit more attractive?
Well, I don't think it's either this or that. I think that the tax credit is something that's important for our officers who live in Anaronda County. And I think the administration is encouraging people to move into Anaronda County. They want people to live in Anaronda County, and this is a benefit that would be hopefully legislated. Under our current form of government, all the county council can do is cut.
That's all we can do legislatively. But seven of us get together and say, hey, we want, we want raises. We're going to, we're going to side, you know, it goes a lot, lot farther than, than what maybe we think. But, okay, thank you.
All right.
All right. Mr. Dale.
Dale Waldorf, 76 Clappy Avenue, Gambles, Maryland, President, FodCOP, CWA 2911. Anaronda County, good place to live, start a business, and to work. Probably took that out of wording wrong, but you know what I'm saying. I work here. I live here in Anaronda County, but I rent. So this really doesn't affect me yet. Let's think about, on, on the, on the front end, we're, we're giving up $2,500. But if I go and buy a home, I'm looking at, wanting to buy a house. Let's be honest. Where am I going to look? I'm going to look where the damn housing is cheapest. My friends, I'm here to tell you, I've got plenty of officers that live outside of Anaronda County. If we can get them to move back into Anaronda County, if I can find affordable housing to purchase a home in Anaronda County, yeah, you, you, Anaronda County, are losing out on 2,500 bucks, but think of the, the fees that, you know, Mr. Hammond touched on. Think of the monies that by me having a home here, I'm going to spend money here. I'm not going to take it home to whatever the next adjacent county that I may move to, or that my officers live in. Mr. Fink, I believe you touched on, you know, is it an incentive? Brother, we're bleeding people. And if this is an incentive to, A, get somebody to come in the door, I'm all for it. At the same time, if it's an incentive for someone to stay, I'm all for it. Mr. Smith, you touched on overtime. Yeah, overtime's great, you know, if you, you know, get to work a little bit of overtime and everything. But when you get mandatory two and three times sometimes, on occasion, in a week, that gets into quality of life. And when these mandatories hit you, you know, five minutes of 11, you're stuck on 11 to 7 overnights, and you haven't had time to prepare, or you have children that are in daycare or whatever. That goes into quality of life, gentlemen.
Got to kill you, buddy.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink?
Just want to ask Dale the same question. Would you rather have $2,500 across the board, all your officers, or the property tax credit? Not that that's really on the table, because...
No, it's not. And it's, it's a fair question. I mean, obviously, you know, I would like the $2,500 for everybody, you know? But at the same time, what is on the table?
Sure.
This is on the table. And honestly, I appreciate the councilman putting it out there, because, you know, it, this is something that'll help us possibly retain people or even hire people.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. With that being said, once again, anybody else want to chime in on 8117? Oh, here to come. Come on down. Take, take the front seat or the stand, whatever you like.
No.
What's that? I don't have anybody else.
Me, I'm sitting.
Yep. Oh, we got more than that. Okay. So we got five seats up here. Let's see where we're at. Okay, this looks good. All right. So what we'll do, we'll start off with you, sir. Need your name and address in two minutes, please.
Sure. Thanks.
Good, you're lit.
There we go. Thank you. My name's Jeff Andreed. I am from Odenton, Maryland. I'm an 11-year resident, citizen of Anaronda County. I'm actually against this bill, and I want to start off by saying, just caveatting, that I'm not against public safety officers. I come from a family full of public safety officers, uncles who are correctional institutes, a godfather. My son is a retired police officer now. But this isn't about a public safety officer and whether you support them. What this is about is whether this is a sound tax policy or not. And Mr. Walker started off by saying, well, we want to do, thank you, we want to provide incentives, we want to provide compensation. We don't do that through, through tax policy. Don't write thank you notes through tax policy. What you look at tax policy is something fair, is something economically efficient, is it simple? That's what the experts say we should look at on, on tax policy. And by nature, property taxes are regressive. And we try to address that in our state law by having something called the Homeowner's Property Tax Credit. That has income caps, that has property valuation caps. This bill has neither. Under this bill, someone who's making $750 a month on Social Security actually pays more property tax than a deputy chief of police would, or a fire, or a brigade officer, I mean, a brigade, brigade head in the fire department, and any other of the senior positions in the police, fire, and correctional departments. So that's one problem, is that there's no, there's no income cap. The second problem is that there's no valuation cap. Under the state law for the homeowner credit, the cap is $300,000. Under this bill, there's no cap. You can have a million dollar house and still get a tax credit. In fact, the first 275,000...
I got to kill you right there.
Sorry about it. Sir?
Brian Chisholm, 258 Moreau Lane, Serona Park, Maryland. And I'm against this bill. Anytime this council wants to speak about tax decreases or tax credits, throw me the pom poms and grab your popcorn, because I'm happy to talk about it. I'd love to see it as much as we can. My biggest concern with this bill is that is a tax shift from what I've read in the bill. And then we get into a position where we are picking winners and losers, and we're shifting the tax burden onto the, to 200,000 people. Although I applaud this group and would do anything for this group, I think when this council gets into the position... this council gets into the position where we're picking winners and losers, that becomes a very slippery slope. This might be step one, but next thing you know, these doors are flying open with every other special interest group that believes they deserve a tax credit, and then that puts us in a bad position. So for that reason alone, I am against this bill.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Ma'am, name and address, two minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Hare, I'm at 3563 Old Trail Road in Edgewater. I fully support a tax cut or a tax credit for the police and other public safety officers, but I share the same concern with this shifting. And really, I think the only way that you could ever make it work is if you simultaneously, as a council, pass a resolution that you will not maximize the taxes, so that the other 200,000 people are not getting placed with this burden of $3.75 million. Realistically, I think the better position for the council is if you're inclined to pass a tax cut, pass it for everyone, make, have everyone, this way, what's good for one is good for all. I believe, Mr. Chairman, that was your statement earlier this evening, let's actually follow through with that. The second concern I have with this, and I don't think it's actually been addressed yet, is that I see quite a bit of an administrative burden in the bill itself. There is an application that has to be filled out, there's verification of employment that has to happen. There are quite a few steps that don't seem to be fully fleshed out, and it's going to be a lot of work for certain people in the council. In fact, I read that there's a 1% administrative fee built into this bill for this burden, and it seems completely nonsensical to me to charge someone for a tax credit. I don't, that doesn't really make a lot of sense, and I think that there's a much more economically efficient way to do this. So, you know, as I said, at the very least, there should be some sort of resolution passed to not maximize the taxes, so that the remaining taxpayers are not footing the bill for this. And in reality, the council should consider tax cuts for everyone, everybody wins. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Corey.
Corey Snow, Odenton, Maryland. I basically, in speaking with many of the people in my community, public safety is a very large concern for many of the communities that I'm specifically interested in, and so building healthy relationships with our law enforcement and first responders, and all of our public safety officers is very, very important to me. However, this bill is concerning to me, because I am concerned about the tension that it can create between just general classes of people. As has been mentioned before, Mr. Peruka had addressed the fact that if one person gets a tax credit and someone else doesn't get a tax credit, that could be a challenge. And quite frankly, I wouldn't want to put our public safety officers in that position. I think that it could eventually become uncomfortable. I think that we absolutely ought to make investments in our public safety officers, and if we think that the county's property tax is driving people away, then we need to have that conversation. You know, if it's driving public safety officers away, who else is it driving away? So, again, across-the-board cut would be a good way to explore that. If we really want to express appreciation for our law enforcement, then that definitely needs to be reflected in our compensation package, that's just the right way to do things. A tax cut really makes them a potential target in political battles and things like that, and I just don't feel like we ought to put our public safety officers in that position. So my thought is to think of a smarter solution.
Okay, sir.
Mark Gass, one of the board directors for the paternal order police, a resident of the county, 1311 Generals Highway. I want to talk about our current staffing on our police department. As of today, we're at 695 officers, as Obie stated. We're budgeted for 745 officers. We had 696 police officers when County Executive Steve Shue took office. The 695 officers we have are doing the job of 1,100 police officers. We work odd hours, we work midnights, we work away from our families, and then we get drafted to work early or stay late after our normal tour duty due to staffing shortages. Our department numbers are making it more difficult to combat some of the police department's biggest problems, like the influx of heroin, street gangs, robberies, fatal car accidents. 29 to 66%, those are the attrition rates of the last five years worth of police academy classes. Lowest is 29, highest is 66%. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to train these guys, and then watching them walk out the door. That's all county tax money. Bill 8117 would be a small token of appreciation the county can show to the police officers who live here, and encourage future officers as recruitment tool to come to the Anarona County Police Department and purchase homes here, instead of taking the higher-paying jobs in PG County, Howard County, Montgomery County, and even Baltimore City. I support 8117, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker. Ms. Hare, did you get a chance to look at the vote in the General Assembly for the bill, the enabling legislation?
I did not.
Okay. Are you aware that the governor supported the bill?
I believe you, if he did.
Okay.
It's, again, it's, I think-
That's all, that's all. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chisholm, are you aware that, and I know you're running now for state delegate, so I'm assuming that's one of the reasons you're down here tonight, and you're running in a district with the minority leader, are you aware that he supported the bill in the General Assembly?
No, I was not, I was just going on my common sense, look at the bill. Like I said, I think the intent is great, and anything we can do to keep our police officers here is one thing, but I think you're setting yourself for a very dangerous precedent.
Both houses unanimously put past the legislation, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Serge, you wanna say something? I know you're biting at the bit, bring it on down. Hold on, let me light you up, there you go.
Joe D'Avinola, Pasadena, Maryland, President of IAFF, Local 1564 Firefighters Union, Anarona County. I'm in favor of this bill. We've, this bill affects us the most, where we have most members living out of county. 70% of our members live out of county because they can't afford to live in the county on our salaries. The last two years that this administration's been in office, we've been to arbitration. One we, first one we lost, second one we won, but again, I'm going to just go on the cocktails of what Obie said, we're some of the lowest-paid firefighters in Maryland. We can't, I mean, our starting salary is $39,000. That is not enough money to buy a home in Anarona County and raise a family here. Yeah, you know, we're understaffed, we have a lot of vacancies, just like other departments of public service, but how many hours can you spend at the job and away from your family? I mean, if you're gonna make your family work, you can't work 30, 40 hours a week overtime to fill vacancies, and we have mandatory overtime, just like every other group. We're understaffed, you know, to make ends meet, we're working overtime just to get by. This affects our membership the most. You know, like I say, this bill, I mean, yeah, going on Councilman Fink, we'd like to have $2,500 extra in our pay salary too, you know, but in order to get that, we gotta go to arbitration every year, because we don't always get bargain in good faith with the county. So, yeah, $2,500 would help us, but we gotta pay lawyers to go to arbitration to win that $2,500, and still, we're the lowest around in Maryland, salary-wise.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
Joe, just 'cause I asked the other two union leaders-
Yeah.
-if you had your choice, would you rather have a $2,500 raise across the board, or this property tax credit?
Definitely. I mean, obviously, if it's only gonna affect 30% of my members that live in the county, yeah, I would want it for everybody, $2,500, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
Actually, had a chance for Ms. Tate to look it up. Governor Hogan signed this bill on May 25th and was very supportive of it, just for the record, so everybody knows. But I do have a question for Mr. Gass and Mr. Avinola. In regards to other, I know you talked to other jurisdictions, I know Baltimore City's mentioned, are there other jurisdictions that are planning on bringing this up, or that you've talked to, that, you know, look at this? I know we're getting into this debate, do you take, you know, pay increase, I mean, if the administration's willing to agree to a pay increase and put it on the record, I'd certainly hear that, but I'm talking about other, you know, groups that you've reached out to, is there any other upcoming legislation? I'm just curious.
I believe PG County is working on it right now as well. I think it's important to mention which one we would rather have. You know, if we were to win a $2,500 raise in arbitration, the other counties are getting it as well, so that just keeps us in the same spot that we're in now. That's important.
And again, all the leaders of the fire unions, that, since it is a state, we're all trying to get this $2,500-
Thank you.
Benefit.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody else wanna chime in on 8117? Bring it on. Okay, so you know more moving in the crowd, we're in a closed public hearing on 8117. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill of 8117.
Bill number 8117, An Ordinance Concerning Real Property Taxes Tax Credits, Public Safety Officer Tax Credits.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hammond, if I provide a $2,500 tax, what's the difference between if I provide a $2,500 tax credit, or I give a salary increase of $2,500? What's the net effect on the budget?
Is that for, if I interrupt, is that for all public safety, or only those living in the county?
Well, so I guess all. So if you do the $2,500 increase for all the public safety officials living in the county, even though that's a, you would have to do it for all the public safety personnel period, what is that number versus this number? Obviously, this number you estimate to be around three-
I'm gonna ask one more question. Including volunteer firefighters too, because that's a big number as well.
Okay, let's just say salary employees, fire and police, just, and detention center personnel.
We, I think I understand your question. We have 1,973 public safety officers as defined under this bill.
Okay.
And if you gave each one of them $2,500-
Check.
It's pretty close to $5 million, $4,932,500.
And the $2,500 tax reduction with this bill, the estimation is?
As, you know, our estimate is $3,700,000.
But the net effect on, so I guess the mechanics of it, either, so with the tax reduction, we lose it on the ability to do the tax and receive the tax finance or funding, but if we pay it, we're giving out, what I'm saying is, aren't we doing the same thing, whether we forego it on the receiving it from the tax, or we give it out, we're still pushing out $3 to $5 million?
Right, and if I could add, that a 5% salary increase, which I believe we've given the public safety units each year, the last three years, is more than $2,500 per employee on average.
Is the administration going to provide a 5% increase in the budget coming down next year?
That's, that's one of the points that Mr. Marzick mentioned. It's part of the process that we go through under the labor law that you all have established, where we have an arbitration process, we have a negotiation process, if that doesn't work out, then we go to arbitration. So it's part of the process that we go through. I'm just telling you, historically, we have, on average, given out pay increases greater than $2,500 that you were talking about across the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, now let's move it forward, okay. We had any discussions? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this is a technical amendment to correct a reference to the tax property article of the state code that was renumbered after codification of all state session laws.
Let me turn it up in a second. Got it. Mr. Walker?
Nothing more than was already said.
Administration?
Support it.
Support it, you said?
Yes, we have this in one of our amendments as well.
Okay, Roger. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grassa.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative, Amendment Number One is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Two.
This amendment, Amendment Number Two, this amendment modifies the term of a public safety officer tax credit to a period of one taxable year, and provides that the credit may be renewed up to four additional taxable years for a maximum total of five taxable years.
Move to it now, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it does exactly what we discussed. This was one of the objections raised in the blue letter by the auditor, and also by the administration, that there was not a time limit, and therefore, there was questions as to the constitutionality of the bill, which is why I'm introducing this one.
So in other words, what happens is they can apply for this credit for each year up to five years?
Correct.
Is that's what I'm getting?
That's correct.
Mr. Marzick?
I actually don't have the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Marzick's looking at that, can I ask the sponsor a question?
Sure, it's Trumbauer.
Thank you, to the sponsor, five years, is that like a standard time, or is that just?
Just a number that I picked.
Okay.
It happens to also coincide with the five years that the administration's proposing in another amendment.
Oh, what a happy coincidence, thank you.
I think, Mr. Trumbauer, I think just historically, I think that's what the opinions of the Attorney General on bills have pretty much zeroed in, in five years, although, as Mr. Peruka pointed out, I believe that they may have an extended view when it comes to the Homestead Credit.
Understand.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prus-
May I speak to that briefly, and to your question, Mr. Trumbauer? This was, I said I was gonna talk about this maybe a little bit more later, and now I'm gonna give you later, but Article 15 of the Constitution requires property to be assessed uniformly, and it, the Constitution itself doesn't give any wiggle room in that. What the AG opinion says is that the court has recognized that a property tax system cannot be administered in perfect uniformity. Well, that's basically just an assertion that the Attorney General makes, because you might ask, well, why not? Why can't it be done uniformly? And he goes on and says, accordingly, the court has accepted a five-year reassessment cycle as not being in violation. So, and then he goes on and says, additionally, the Office of the Attorney General has opined that the Homestead Tax Credit, and this is kind of a double negative here, was not in clear violation of the uniformity clause until it reached its 10th year, which is kind of an odd way to, I think, to opine. So, the Attorney General is saying courts have disregarded the Constitution, and he would, I guess he's, by implication, he's saying, he wouldn't object until it got over 10 years, but from my point of view, and this is where I'm going, from my point of view, I'm looking not at what the courts have said, or what the Attorney General has said, but what the Constitution says. And I, I mean, because I've taken, we've all taken, I've taken an oath to that, not to an Attorney General, or to a court. So the Constitution actually is fairly clear that it needs to be uniform, so that's the objection I wanted to raise and explain. Thank you.
Mr. Marzick?
Looks like this language was taken from our amendment, which will be coming up, so we would be supportive of this language.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grassa.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment makes certain technical corrections, replaces the definition of dwelling with a reference to the state code definition, clarifies that the tax credit applies to county taxes, limits the public safety officer tax credit to the lesser of $2,500 for the total tax due on a dwelling, provides that an application for the public safety officer tax credit shall be made as directed by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, clarifies that the tax credit terminates when a public safety officer no longer resides in or owns the dwelling for which the tax credit was granted, and establishes criteria for payment of property taxes, interest, and penalties upon termination of the tax credit in certain situations.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this gets into some of the technical issues of the actual administration of the bill. Ms. Gray's summary explains what each provision of this does, but this gets into one of the challenges that will be happening with ESTAT, State Department of Assessments and Taxations, who have not developed a plan yet to administer this. I know Ms. McQuade has had conversations with them, and I'm gonna defer to her on the administrative side of actually running a tax credit like this.[1761.46] of actually running a tax credit like this.
Hi. Okay, so first of all, this is governed by the state statute and the State Department of Assessments and Taxation will be responsible for the administrative duties that relate to the application and determination of the eligibility for the public safety officer tax credit. So ESTAT's gonna be responsible for the applications and then administering the credits at this point from what we can tell from the state statute. Our understanding, in speaking with them, and it's not official, but it's, our understanding is that they have not developed an application or approval process yet and they may not do so until the jurisdiction enacts the tax credit. So right now, we don't know how this is gonna be managed by ESTAT or what our responsibilities are gonna be. The role of finance and personnel can't be defined until ESTAT determines what their process is going to be. We've attempted to determine what our role will be in this so we can prepare for it. What we can see so far is that personnel will be likely to be required to provide an eligibility certificate to the, for the applicants or they need to sign off on every application because they're gonna have to prove eligibility that they actually live in the, live in the county and that they are a public safety officer so that they're actually eligible. Once ESTAT processes the file, they're gonna have to, the applications are gonna need to send finance a file and we're gonna have to be able to process the file. The format that they use is going to determine the work that's going to have to happen on our side as far as the taxes. Regardless of the format of the file that comes in, we're gonna need to be able to tax, to track the tax credits. When we were talking about the service points, one of the issues that we have with the service points is right now the fire department is tracking LoSAP credits and that's where the 50 service points comes in that we were discussing. If we have to track it for specifics such as fire calls, specifics, then they're gonna have to track that in the same way, but they're gonna have to report it differently. Right now, they report to us who earns 50 and who doesn't earn 50 and that's how we would administer it. So if they're gonna have to track it as specifics, as in fire calls, EMT calls or whatever, they'll have to report that a little bit different to us. And when I talk to the fire chief, they'll have to audit that closely for those, the determination of how they're getting those credits.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
The, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
That's all right, Ms. Walker.
I'm told, and are you familiar with the LoSAP system?
Um, yes.
The electronic piece of it where they enter the information? I was told that those points are tracked by category. Is that correct?
Yeah, they are tracked by category.
So it's not a heavy lift for them to separate out the three columns that I was referring to?
Yeah.
Fire calls, EMT, EMS calls and the shift work.
They would have to report that to us in a different way than they're currently reporting it to us.
Right, so instead of giving you cumulative, they would just, they would have to give it to you broken out?
They would have to.
Which they have the ability to do currently within the current system.
I believe so. I haven't seen the system.
I'm told, I'm told that they do, just so you're aware. Thank you.
So let me, let me just ask something. This, this tax credit, would it show up as like a check? I mean, would it come in the mail from the state of Maryland, the assessment office, $2,500?
No.
How does it show up or is it taken off your tax bill?
It's gonna be taken off your tax bill.
Well, what if your tax bill is $2,000 and it thinks $2,500?
It'll be the lesser.
That's what I just read.
Yes, it would be up to the limit of, up to $2,500.
So in other words, they don't get that extra 500 bucks or whatever it is, right? So that's kinda like a stickler, right? Which makes them wanna live in a little bit higher place so they get the maximum out, right? I mean, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking out the box here. I mean, it's, you know, well, you know, hey, he lives in a, he lives in a $300,000 place and he's getting $2,500. My house is $165,000 and I'm getting $2,000. You're actually making more to me and I'm living in a, that's the way I would see it. Sounds like you might have a new recruit coming. Yeah. That's what I, that is. This is just the incentive he was looking for. Yeah, I mean, hey, just, just calling it the way I see it. That's all it is. Okay. Hey, it is what it is. All right, with that being said, Ms. Tate says she's gotta go home tonight, so let's move. All right. So let's go forward here. Madam Secretary, wanna call the roll on Amendment Number Three? I think's where we're at. Is that right?
Yes, Amendment Number Three.
Go ahead.
Amendment Number Three. Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment restates eligibility requirements for the public safety officer tax credit to clarify that a person be currently employed by Anaronda County as a public safety officer and be eligible for a certain state tax credit and includes a reference to a certain section of the county code pertaining to volunteer firefighter service points.
Right, motion to adopt. You let me slide there, Mr. Trumbauer. You's are the first ones on those adopts.
Second.
Okay, we got it. All right, let's see, and who we got? Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this amendment does a couple of things of substance that we had referred to earlier in our testimony. First is that this clarifies that the public safety personnel must be employees of Anaronda County. So this takes away the issue of Annapolis City or another jurisdiction, but they have to be employed by the county or be a part of a volunteer, Anaronda County Volunteer Fire Department. It also brings in all volunteer firefighters so that all volunteer firefighters would be eligible for this, not just some volunteer firefighters. We think that all volunteers should be eligible for this.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair?
Good, Mr. Walker?
Mr. Marzick, so as we discussed earlier, one of your objections was the total overall cost of the, potential cost of the legislation. And it seems like, from what I'm just reading and hearing, that you're increasing the cost of the legislation. Is that correct?
I think the cost would only be increased if more than the current numbers participate in the program because the calculations are based on those who are receiving the 50 points and our calculations were done on all who received the 50 points. So there wouldn't be an increase in cost.
So when you all ran the cap?
Because presumably, a lot of the 500.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on just a second. So when you ran the calculations, you didn't see in the bill that I had carved out those three categories? Or you just chose to ignore?
We were basing the calculations on all volunteers. We thought that was the intent of the bill.
Okay.
We didn't think we were picking certain volunteers.
So the total package actually would be less then? The 3.8 that's estimated would actually decrease if we removed the administrative volunteers and left the bill as its intended?
No, we don't know that. We don't know that because we don't know who is receiving it administratively and who is receiving it.
But you can figure that out before the next meeting?
I don't know that answer.
I mean, I think you can because the capability is there within the system to parse out the three types of calls that are delineated in the bill.
Okay, but as a form of policy, we don't think that certain volunteers should receive the credit and certain shouldn't. We think all volunteers should be deserving of the credit if you're gonna pass a bill that has a tax credit for volunteer firefighters.
Okay, so, so you're okay with the higher amount then?
We're okay with all volunteer firefighters being part of the bill. No, all volunteers should be treated the same way.
Right, the higher amount, the full 3.8.
You wanna parse them out and divide them up? We don't wanna divide up the volunteers.
3.8 million.
You saw what happened here with the LoSAP bill.
3.8 million, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Madam Secretary, wanna call the roll on Amendment Number Four?
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
I'm sorry, sir.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number Four is passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five. This amendment provides that a public safety officer tax credit is valid for a period of one taxable year, provides that the credit may be renewed for four additional taxable years for a maximum of, total of five taxable years, establishes timeframes for filing a credit or removal application, a renewal application, and provides that the tax credit terminates after a public safety officer receives the tax credit for five taxable years.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair. There you go. There you go. I'm trying to understand this one second over here because isn't this just? It's an override. Yes, that's what I, thanks, Mr. Trumbauer. It's an override plus. They're doing some additional things that I suspect. Putting the shuffle to it. I suspect we're gonna hear about. The Marzick shuffle, I got it. I'm with you, brother.
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Kenny on this because I'm trying to compare this to Amendment One, which we hadn't seen, so, excuse me, Amendment Two. I know the language was taken from our bill, but there are other clarifying items that, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Kenny if she can explain.
Sure.
For the record, county attorney, a senior assistant county attorney, this does include language that was included in Amendment Number Two, but it does include some additional clarifying language to specify when an application for renewal could be submitted because the new language is providing that the public safety officer can apply for the tax credit and also may renew it. So it also has some clarifying language as to when the renewal application would be submitted and also it would include language in the termination section to clarify that the, that the tax credit would terminate after it has been received by the public safety officer for five taxable years. So it does contain a little bit more additional language than the prior amendment.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Trumbauer? Thank you. So, Ms. Kenny, the intent of this amendment is the same as Amendment Two, but you have additional language that makes you feel more comfortable with some of the clarity. So is it, is it your opinion, we, if we liked Amendment Two, we should pass this and it doesn't conflict with the intent of that amendment?
Right, they both have the same intent. Like I said, it just adds in some additional clarifying information.
You just spell out a couple things in addition.
Information.
All right, I, that's kinda what I saw, but I don't know if this.
I don't check.
Yeah, looks, looks good to me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I ask a question?
Okay. Yeah, Jody, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Kenny? Does this answer the concern that I had that you wanna make sure that the tax credit follows the person and not the property? I was concerned that the person could move from one property to another and get it five years on one property and then five years on another property. And I think I said something about that in the blue letter, that it, clarifying it to make sure that it follows the person. Does this do that?
Right, because the, the tax credit would terminate after they've received it for five taxable years under the language that's added in here.
Could they go and move to another home and get it again? Even with your change?
Well, not, not if it follows a public safety officer.
Okay, I just, I haven't seen this wording and how it lays out in the bill, so I wanted to make sure that this is gonna address that.
Right.
Because if they still could move and get another one, you'd wanna clarify it further.
Right, no, if that public, if the language says the public safety officer, after they receive the tax credit for five taxable years, it terminates, then I'm not sure that they could apply for it again for another five years if they, if they moved every five years.
Okay, all right.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Madam Secretary, let's call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Five is adopted.
All right, hung stretch, here we come.